Testing one, two.
As a mayor of the town of Clayton, I'd like to call this Clayton Town Council meeting to order. I invite you to stand for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Most gracious and heavenly Father, we pause to give you thanks for the many blessings of this day, and we ask, Lord, now that you be with us as we proceed with the business for the town of Clayton. In Jesus's name I pray. Amen. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
No adjustments tonight.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Motion to adopt the agenda as written.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next is your consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Up next is the Clayton for you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Josh Proft. I'm with the Communications Department. We're excited to present a new Clayton for you episode. This one will be featuring the advisory boards.
Now, the town of Clayton has seven advisory boards where residents like you can share ideas, lend your skills, and guide important decisions. In this episode of Clayton for You, we'll highlight the boards that play a key role in advising town council and show you how to get involved.
The Parks and Recreation Advisory Board offers guidance and recommendations on the development, operation, and maintenance of parks, recreational programs, and facilities. The Downtown Development Advisory Board supports initiatives that focus on the vitality and promotion of the downtown area such as events or the facade grant program. The Library Advisory Board provides input on library services, programs for all ages, and community outreach initiatives. The Planning Board reviews rezoning requests, land use planning, and updates to the town's unified development ordinance. The Public Art Advisory Board guides the selection and placement of public art around town such as murals, sculptures, and other art projects. The Board of Adjustment reviews requests for variances from zoning rules and helps interpret how those rules apply for unique situations. The Fire Department Advisory Board makes recommendations on department needs, safety priorities, and equipment upgrades.
Each year in the month of September, residents can apply to fill open seats on our advisory boards. New members are appointed by the town council at the start of each calendar year to serve three-year terms. Don't miss your chance to get involved.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good work. Up next is the proposed pedestrian safety infrastructure improvements near schools.
Evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Council members. Good to meet you all earlier this afternoon. Kenzie Holton, I'm the new Assistant Engineering Director, week three on the job, so I'm excited to get to talk to you all this evening in front of the crowd. I was asked by the team to do a quick little presentation on proposed pedestrian safety improvements near schools. This is something I worked together with our engineering team and Dolores with her group, downloaded a lot of information about schools in the Clayton area recently in my mind. Still working on that, but I'd like to talk through some of the things that we've been working on, specifically a couple items I've been working on with development groups of late. So, what's our goal with this? Pretty simple. Identify and facilitate pedestrian safety improvements for area schools, and then through stakeholder engagement, act upon completing said improvements. So there's some different scenarios to work through for those different options. Our approach, one, is to work with school improvement projects, for example, the high school, Clayton High School redevelopment project, and private development projects near schools to identify and integrate pedestrian safety improvements. So what opportunities afford themselves to us to partner with development projects as they're coming through in areas of existing schools where there may be some pedestrian improvements that could occur. Also engage with on-call transportation engineering firms, so this will be something we will work specifically, our engineering team will work with, to evaluate the town of Clayton schools for areas of pedestrian safety improvements. Locations, so for now, we know a couple of projects, as I mentioned, the Clayton High School project is coming through redevelopment, a major redevelopment project, working with them to create some improvements or achieve some improvements along their frontage. I'll touch on that. And then the Riverwood Elementary and Middle Schools are nearby and adjacent development, the Athletic Club Commercial Development, working with them as we're bringing in a multi-use path down Pritchard, tying in, adding more sidewalks to the area and how to make that connectivity with the schools. And then other schools to be assessed by our town transportation engineering firm include Powhatan, Cooper Elementary, West Clayton Elementary, and Clayton Middle School. So digging in just real quick to the Clayton High School site, got an image here that shows existing sidewalks in kind of that orangish-yellow color. You can kind of see it's a little sporadic along the frontage there of Robertson, down Blanche, Ellington, and then Fire, Fire, Fire Access Road, I can't remember the name of it, and then Fayetteville Street. So as part of their site development plans, and in conjunction with our multi-use path coming down Robinson, we've identified a few elements for improvements. Shown in pink there are these additional sidewalk segments that'll be installed there along Robinson, there along the north side, and then we'll continue those coming down and connecting all the way into Fayetteville. The two yellow stars we've included there are two additional crosswalks we'd like to see. We've got in plans for our multi-use path, but we'd like to try and get ahead of that with the school redevelopment and work with a partnership to them and a development agreement with them to see those crosswalks be added. I understand there's a lot of traffic, school-student traffic coming down and across, to try and get to the other side of the highway. So identifying those locations there at, I think it's that Walgreens exit there, and then Brook Street as well. So the school district improvements, as I mentioned, along South Robinson, new sidewalk along Fire Rescue Drive, excuse me. And then working with them as well is this issue of the stacking. How can we maximize the actual stacking of the traffic as it comes into the site for the pickup drop-off? Looking through the TIA, they've done a really good job of maximizing that stacking, going above kind of the minimum of what the stacking requirements would be. So I think that's a good solution there, and then they've actually cut down on their access points onto both roads as part of their project too. As I mentioned, the school or the town and the school working to complete those additional sidewalks as well. Also, I thought I'd throw in a slide, it's a great slide, a little bit of an update I got from our project team on the Clayton Connector Robertson Street Sidewalk project. This is where they're at now. You can see the completed work, stakeholder public meetings, 65% design plans. Those are, those need to be revised based on NC DOT review. The NEPA environmental documents are underway, utility coordination's underway, as well as, as we've talked about today, coordination of Clayton High School. Upcoming work will be right-of-way acquisition, and then here's just kind of an updated snapshot at the bottom there for you all where that project is. So that'll have a huge effect on the frontage there, connecting the greenway all the way up to what I understand is a very popular brewery site there, as I witnessed driving by it every day and seeing how many cars are out front. So, next up, I'll switch up to Riverwood Elementary School, Middle School, and it's at Athletic Club Boulevard, so I kind of gave a broad picture on this one. You can see the two school campuses there. The green shows the multi-use path that essentially is on the school property, and then again, that yellow color shows the sidewalks in the area. You can see we're missing a lot of yellow really between Pritchard and Manning, and spending a lot of time today getting up to speed on kind of some of the issues with the actual school day traffic, is there's a lot of staging, stacking happening on Athletic Club, but also a lot of pedestrian movement, and there's not a lot of pedestrian connectivity across the road. And so, the, the project that's happening up there on the closer block between Pritchard and Collinsworth, we've been working, sorry, here's a closer look, sorry, of that entrance, and essentially the school routes their walkers across Athletic Boulevard, Club Boulevard, at Collinsworth, and then they also bring them down along the green multi-use path there to the Manning Drive intersection. There's no real clear crosswalks on that, kind of that north side, and I understand some of the actual school teachers out there with safety vests trying to help with that traffic maneuver or traffic control. So this is a great opportunity, I think, for the town to work with the school district and the adjacent development to complete some additional crossings, but also to kind of engage in a conversation about the stacking and the approaches to minimize the actual traffic impacts on Athletic Club Boulevard. So currently, the issue is, yes, is no formal crosswalk of the northeast, northwest portions of the intersection, no sidewalks along the northwest side of Athletic Club Boulevard between Pritchard and Manning. There's kind of a good goat path, well-worn path there, but no formal sidewalk. So here's a little snip from the site plan. We're working with the developer and the site engineer where they have to provide sidewalk around the entire project, and you'll see on the Collinsworth side there on the plan left, and then the bottom side along Athletic Club Boulevard, they're providing a five-foot sidewalk on Collinsworth Drive and Athletic Club Boulevard, as I said, and then working to bring down a multi-use path along Pritchard, getting ready for what the transportation plan calls for, for the future improvements on Pritchard, calls for that multi-use path. As they came in under the prior code, we have worked with them, and they're being very helpful in providing a good eight-foot path to the maximum extent they can coming down, and then near the intersection, they run into some issues with the existing signage and the utility poles and the traffic, the traffic loops, but there's a nice little elegant kind of pass around here with this eight-foot path coming through their site through an easement that'll help bring that traffic down to that five-foot path. And again, you can see the Athletic Club Boulevard frontage there in the green, you'll see that kind of that sidewalk we're talking about adding in down at that Collinsworth location, and possibly even considering another one running parallel Athletic Club Boulevard. City will cover the cost of the crosswalk through a development agreement with the developer, as well as an additional three feet that we're getting from them, because they only had to do five feet of sidewalk frontage along the whole site, but to help meet that multi-use path need and continuation.
So, before we go any further, can you get back one more slide?
Yep.
To the one, okay. So, I'm not sure, Mr. Attorney, at what point there is additional information council is going to receive tonight regarding Riverwood Elementary and Middle School. I don't know if this is the time to bring in a little bit of that information, or if we should just wait until the public hearing.
I would suggest waiting until the public hearing.
Perfect, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, so continuing on, so we talked about two sites we're working to achieve developments as part of their projects, their development, redevelopment projects. How do we assess the remaining schools and the issues around the safety, pedestrian safety around the remaining schools in the town? We have on-call contracts with different engineering firms and engaging with a transportation engineering firm to assess those remaining schools, as well as the other ones we're working through. We don't, we're not looking at these little improvements as a, that takes care of everything. We're going to look at them all as a, in a complete picture. Identify what those issues are, goals, again, increase safe routes to schools and decrease the traffic stacking on public streets. the traffic stacking on public streets. That assessment would then be used to identify further improvements, and then the town will lead that approach to adjusting, addressing the pedestrian safety issues. Again, next steps, complete the agreements with the school district for the high school and the private development for the improvements associated with their projects, kind of quick and easy, low-hanging fruit improvements, and then finalize our scope of services on call transportation engineering firm to identify those locations of need and work up improvements that we can do. That's my little quick and short, but I think we were queuing it up for some more discussion after that.
All right, any questions or comments? Mr. Casey?
Thank you for that presentation, focusing on all the schools. One of the things I mentioned at one of the last council meetings is there's a crosswalk at Clayton High School there on Fayetteville Street, and there's no stop sign or stoplight there, and it's just a crosswalk. Fayetteville Street's a straight street, people gain a lot of speed and drive up there pretty fast. For me, I know that's a town on street, and I would say that not only for this location, but other locations, especially at the intersection of Fayetteville and Hamby. When it's, when it's a town on street, I'd love to see us have some sort of rigid-to, you know, yield signs that can be placed in the middle of the road, if that makes sense, and there's no legality issues around that, because I think, you know, in situations like that, there's no stop sign there, there's no stoplight there, it's a straight street, there's a crosswalk there, you know, somebody not familiar, if the area could be, you know, somebody being reckless, of course, could not pay attention to that stop sign, and that's a safety hazard for me. And I know there's some other areas around town that's similar. I know that's a different, if it's a DOT street versus a town street, you know, with respect to the Riverwood community likewise, I don't know if some of those streets are owned by the HOA or if they're owned by the town, but I know Pritchard's probably a DOT road, but I think we definitely need to consider taking advantage of the streets that the town owns to have maybe, you know, those rigid-type yield signs or something like that that can be a little bit more. They're not very expensive, I'm looking right here, and you know, I think that'd be a good addition. I know that's part of similar safety, you know, discussions on these safety meetings that y'all have, but I would, I would hope that that would be looked into a little bit more diligently. Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you for that presentation, very helpful, appreciated the update on the LAP project as well. And I just, I had asked a question recently that I just wanted to throw out there for interested citizens, that we had had some requests to look into the speed humps in certain areas, and upon asking about it further, I learned that two additional considerations that have to be made in that instance, one is for emergency service vehicles and the other for truck routes. We, for example, in our downtown, we have several businesses where large trucks need to go through and make deliveries, so it does limit the options for speed humps, and just want to throw that out there as an FYI.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thanks, sir.
Very good, thank you.
Up next on our introductions and special presentations will be the National IT Professionals' Day proclamation, and I'd like to give the floor to Councilmember Archer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Town of Clayton proclamation, National IT Professionals' Day. Whereas the field of information technology, IT, plays a critical role in the operation, development, and progress of our city, impacting all aspects of daily life, including business, healthcare, education, government services, and more. And whereas IT professionals work tirelessly behind the scenes to ensure the smooth functioning of systems, networks, and technology infrastructure, empowering individuals and organizations to connect, communicate, and thrive in a digital world. And whereas IT professionals are essential in safeguarding sensitive information, providing cybersecurity, troubleshooting technical issues, and innovating solutions to help our town grow and adapt to the ever-evolving technological landscape. And whereas these dedicated individuals solve problems and keep our digital systems operational, ensuring that we can enjoy the benefits of technology with confidence and security. And whereas IT Professionals' Day offers an opportunity to acknowledge and celebrate the talents, skills, and dedication of these professionals, as well as to raise awareness of the importance of IT education, career development, and the need for continuous innovation in this dynamic field. Now therefore, on behalf of the Clayton Town Council, we hereby proclaim September 16th, 2025, as National IT Professionals' Day, proclaimed by the Clayton Town Council the second day of September 2025.
Awesome. Thank you guys so much for everything that you do for us. It's critical every day, and it's very appreciated. Let's have a nice round of applause. You want to get a picture made? Our next proclamation is the Constitution Week Proclamation, and I'd like to give the floor to Councilmember Casey.
Thank you, Mayor. Town of Clayton Constitution Week Proclamation. Whereas September 17th, 2025, marks the 238th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commence the occasion. And whereas public law 1915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September the 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, on behalf of the Clayton Town Council, we hereby proclaim the week of September the 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution in 1787 by diligently protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. Proclaim the Clayton Town Council this, the 22nd, the 20th, the second day of September 2025. Signed, Jody McLeod, Mayor Jody McLeod. And at this time, I'd like to have Ms. Francis come up with the National Society of the American Revolution. She has a few comments, and then we'll get a photo. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Fran Kiker, and I'm a region of the Smith Bryan chapter of the Daughters of American Revolution in Smithfield, but we draw our members from all over the county, and during this time, this celebration of the Constitution, we ask each town to produce a proclamation. We thank you for doing that. And I just want to add that the United States Constitution, 238 years, is the oldest constitution still alive in the world, with the exception of a very tiny town, not town, but microstate, they call it, of San Marino, which is inside the borders of Italy, they have about 30,000 people. Theirs was from the 1600s. But each year, we also celebrate on September the 17th by asking people to come to the steps of the Johnson County Courthouse at 3:45, and we have a very short program. At 4 o'clock, we also ask people to bring bells, wear colonial clothes if you have them, you don't have to. And at 4 o'clock, everyone rings the bells, because that is the time that all of the churches in Philadelphia peeled when, to notify the people in Philadelphia that the Constitution had been signed. So thank you very much.
And our last presentation this evening will be the pavement condition survey and street maintenance program.
Mayor, Council, thank you for your time this evening. A few weeks ago, we presented some information, some pretty in-depth information, following our recent completion of our pavement condition assessment this year. This is something that we do within industry standard every three years, provides us the information that we need to apply some strategic thinking towards where to apply our resources in maintaining our street system. So glad to have Steve Lander back from Withers Ravelle to provide this update tonight.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Steve Lander, Director of Pavement Management for Withers Ravelle, and I'm excited to present the results of the pavement condition survey, which I know you've heard before, but I don't always get to present good news, and we have good news here. So we're going to tell you where you were, where you are now, and then where we're going to be in the future with the roadway network. So where does it start? It starts with a pavement condition survey, and, and our folks rode every segment of street in the town multiple times, and it's recommended by FHWA, which is the Federal Highway Administration, to, to do one of these surveys every two to three years. It's an unbiased approach, so none of, none of our folks live in, in the town, so it's not like I'm trying to get Councilmember Anderson's street paved while I'm there. We just, we look at it like reffing a game where your kid's not in it, and we use software, lifecycle modeling software to determine where we're going to be in the future, and a report is provided. These slides are kind of not working right. Anywho, so the town has 97 miles of asphalt pavement streets, and we used what's known as the long-term pavement performance rating methodology, LTPP, it's recommended by FHWA, and we go and we collect the stresses for every, every distress on the street, and from that, we generate what's known as a pavement condition index, and that's the overall score, and zero is the worst, 100's the best. We've conducted such surveys with the similar rating methodology in 2019, 2021, 2025. So this slide demonstrates, this is a bar chart, and you can see at the bottom, we have very good, good, fair, poor, and very poor. Those are the ranges of our PCI scores, and if you look at the blue bars, that's your 2019. What council realized was that, number one, the PCI score was a 68, and that there was a lot of poor streets. So it was, it was brought to council's attention, more money was being, was allocated towards the roads, and if we look at the yellow, we start having a nice slide. We, we're trying to move over to the left. That's the whole idea, to try to get more good and very good streets. And in 2025, you can see the green bars, we have much more very good and good streets, and that's a, a very positive trend that we like to see. And so the current funding right now is $2.5 million per year. Like I said, in 2019, the PCI score, that pavement condition index was a 68, and, and we are now at an 80. So a really great trend. Just to give you an idea, where does the town stack up with other municipalities? Well, it's pretty well, it's up high on the list, something to be proud of, that you took action on it, and, and the roads are in much better condition because of that. Another look, I'm typically used to showing these maps, and there's a lot more red on these maps, there's a lot of green. Green is good, just another visual to show you that there's a lot of progress being made on the town streets. So moving forward, a pavement condition survey tells us where we are. So where are we going to be in the future? And that's where the lifecycle modeling comes into play, and we're able to run scenarios with different funding amounts and different treatment types. And so what you can see here is that the red and the green line both have that $2.5 million, which is the current funding. It keeps it pretty steady around that 80 mark for, for a good many years. The model does not have any inflation in it, so, you know, there's, there are things that are going to change over time, but this tells us that if this funding amount, it's going to keep the network in the condition where you want it. So this is a deterioration curve for roadway, and I like analogies. We never buy a car and just drive it and not do maintenance on it, like nobody change, gets rid of the, you know, doesn't change the oil, right? We don't say we're going to get rid of that money, we're just going to change engines on our cars, right? So pavement is like that, we pave it, and sometimes we just let it go, and we end up, it's called mill and fill, right? And so we can do things early on and, and treat them, and it really works. High on the curve, that's, that's the name of the game, we want to stay high on the curve. It's, it's the highest level of service for the least cost is what we're aiming for, and so that's why these types of treatments are there. So I'm going to, I have pictures, and I'll explain each one of these, but as you see, when we go down this, the different categories, the dollar amount increases, and when things jump categories, things get expensive, and we're trying to minimize that as much as So in the top left, those are known as rejuvenators, and it's something, it's more, it's like an oil change, it's something that we can do, it's cheap. It goes down on the pavement, and it's pink, sometimes people complain that it's pink, but it goes into the pavement, it disappears after an hour, you know, you barely know that it was there. It puts back a part of the asphalt that dissipates when you're making it and putting, putting it down. Very inexpensive, it works. When the roads get a little more distressed, micro-surfacing, which is a thin overlay, protects the top layer, and then moving down to the bottom left, most folks are familiar with the paving projects with mill and fill. And then when the road is totally gone, where we have to replace the base, a lot of times we're using a reconstruction, full-depth reclamation is what FDR is, and it's the most expensive. We try to stay away from it, sometimes you need it, but what we want to do is proportion these things so that it maximizes the, the dollars that are being spent on the road, and we want to try to keep it high on the curve, like I said earlier. So to wrap this up, you know, it's kudos to the town for the PCI improvement. It's basically an 18% improvement from 2019 to 2025, which is something to celebrate. You know, and it came about by a strategic approach, right, where you looked at the pavement condition index, and this is not where we want the streets to be, and, and monies was, were allocated for the roads, and the roads have shown that that money is being well-spent. And moving forward in the sustainability of things, incorporating other treatments, the rejuvenators, the micro-surfacings, that, that's going to take you a long way to, for, to make perpetual pavement. And, and one of the things I always like to talk about is the coordination with other utilities, and I know there's not a person in this room that likes to see a cut on brand-new asphalt, right? So we want to try to minimize as much as possible, and obviously, we're trying to achieve the highest level of service for these roads, and, and by incorporating what we've done with the report and the lifecycle modeling, we're able to accomplish that.
Some questions or comments? I think we're good. Very good, thank you. Excellent, thank you. Up next will be a series of public hearings. Our first public hearing tonight is 2025-40-ANX Clayton Village Center Annexation.
Good evening, everyone, Mayor, Town Council members. My name is Audrey Duchesne, and I'm one of the senior signers here for the Town of Clayton. This is the annexation petition for the Clayton Village Center Annexation, and so this project is also aligned with the second public hearing that we'll see today. that we'll see today for the conditional rezoning. So this is a request to annex 2.89 acres, compromise among six parcel, to receive town services. The public noticing dates, as per general statute, are also being included here. And it is word mentioned that this request is really to complete the annexation in full of the six parcels that are part of the Village Center Clayton project. This is an aerial view of the project. It is located between Willwood Drive and Clayton Boulevard, right next to the Buckhorn Branch Development. This is also the map that I took from the second public hearing that we will see tonight. This is the map of the rezoning, but it's also showing that it will also have the map for the annexation overall. And so if approved, the rezonings site will match the annexation request tonight. This is just a map to show the future land use map. And this is the end for the annexation presentation. May you have any questions? Staff is here to answer.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for staff? All right. Hearing none. This has been noted as a public hearing. So I'll now open the public hearing. Anyone wish to speak on this topic, please step forward and state your name for the record.
Good evening, Mayor, Town Council. David DeYoung with Riverwild Development. I'm here representing the owners and can answer any questions if you have any.
Awesome. Any questions for Mr. DeYoung? All right. Thank you, sir. Anyone else? No one else wishing to speak on this particular public hearing? I will close the public hearing and turn it over to council for their discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance 2025-09-01.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the adoption of ordinance 2025-09-01. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, like son. Motion carries. Up next is the 2025-34-CZM, Clayton Village Center Conditional Rezoning Major Modification.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, Town Council members. Audrey Duchesne, Senior Planner. This is in connection with the annexation we just saw. So this is the Clayton Village Center Conditional Rezoning. This is a major modification to an already approved conditional rezoning. So the request here is really to make sure that all parcels of the projects are included in the ordinance. And so the previous conditional rezoning was just only including one PIN number in the ordinance instead of six. And so this is just to resolve this clerical error. The property size is about 12.4 acres. It is located between Clayton Boulevard, Willwood Drive, and next to the Buckhorn Branch Development. As it right now, there's some structures on the site, but it is overall vacant and undeveloped. A little bit of background for this project. It was originally approved in 2022 for 234 multifamily units, including some commercial retail space. Following the entitlement in 2022, the applicant received site plan approval in 2024. And right now, it is currently under review with construction drawings application. And this is where staff also made aware of the discrepancy between the ordinance. And so we're here today because of, just to make sure that all PIN numbers are included in the ordinance. Nope. Okay. There you go. And so for this major modification, there's no changes to the master plan, no changes to the use intensities, or neither the densities. There have been some minor changes to the conditions of approval, as well as the master plan, just to make sure that all documents align and are cohesive, which one of the other one. And this is why tonight, again, this is really just an application to correct the record. For the future land use map, this one, it was found inconsistent with the employment center in the medium-density residential designations. But overall, the project does and is consistent with the goals of the Conference of Growth Plan. It also word mentioned that the original approval was adopted despite the inconsistencies. And the map should have been updated after this approval back in 2022. If approved tonight, we'll make sure that this map will be updated to the most appropriate designation. Considerations tonight is to the condition of approval, including the agenda package. There's no changes to the proposed conditions, with some corrections for typos with the master plan. And Town Council shall make the final decision regarding the conditional rezoning application. Staff is recommending approval with conditions of the conditional rezoning major modification request. Planning Board also recommend approval with conditions, following the meeting on July 28. And so staff recommend motion number two on the sheet of consistency.
May you have any question for staff? We're here to answer.
Questions, comments? Mr. Casey?
Thank you. Excuse me. I have a cough and smell here. Appreciate that information. I'm a little, I mean, I understand that this project was something that was approved back in 2022. And there's obviously some corrections that need to be made. I'm just, I'm kind of curious as to why it came back to us as a conditional. And there wasn't something that could be done at staff level. Just out of curiosity, because I feel like we, it's been voted on, it's been approved. If, you know, is there legal liability, you know, for the town if, you know, it doesn't get approved tonight, since it's already been approved before? So I don't know if you could-
It was a legal recommendation.
Okay, okay.
Just to make sure the record of approval is clear.
Okay, well, I can answer my question. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Archer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could you flip back one side, please? Thank you. Okay, I just wanted to make sure I had the correct motion. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? All right. Thank you. This has been noted as a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this topic, please step forward and state your name for the record.
Good evening once again. David DeYoung with Riverwild Development. Staff has done a really good job explaining the case and why we're here tonight, and here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. DeYoung? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Michael Twining, and I live at 40 wherever Cap Crab Apple Court in the Buckhorn Branch subdivision, near the proposed Clayton Village Center project. While this development may bring jobs and housing, it will also bring significantly more traffic. Our town continues to approve new residential construction, but roadway improvements have not kept pace. This leaves residents facing growing congestion and safety concerns. Can you please tell us what specific plans the developer, the town, or the DOT have to manage this increase? Will we see new traffic patterns, added lanes, updated signals, road improvements, or even new road construction to maintain safe and efficient flow? These are essential considerations, reasonable, practical, and in the public interest, and I believe should be addressed before moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, not hearing from anyone else. I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to council for deliberation. Ms. Archer?
Thank you for this correction tonight. I know it clears up the legal record. As stated by staff in the presentation, this was an application that was voted on several years ago. And as part of that application, they had to make various improvements for the property pedestrian safety and traffic as part of that application. So this was just simply to update the PIN numbers for that application. And on that note, I am in favor of the application and prepared to make a motion pending the rest of the council's deliberation.
All right. Anyone else?
I appreciate the comments. Obviously, this is a clerical correction, as Councilwoman Archer said. And, you know, this has already been voted on. I understand the concerns, but I think there's obviously some legality issues otherwise. So, you know, doing the citizens the proper, we need to vote as we need to, because otherwise, there could be litigation otherwise. So no further comment.
Mr. Mayor, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Ms. Archer?
I make a motion to adopt ordinance 2025-09-03 with the conditions. And that motion would be the approval inconsistent with the current 2045 Comprehensive Growth Plan. While this request is generally consistent with the growth plan, in that goal LU1, goal LU3, and strategy LU 3.1.3 are met, it is inconsistent in that the properties are designated as employment center and medium density residential in the future land use map. The employment center component does not envision residential uses, and the density proposed exceeds the recommended density in medium density residential. However, this action is reasonable and in the public interest, in that the request is consistent with the surrounding land uses and development pattern of the area. Second.
A motion and a second for adoption of ordinance 2025-09-03, and consistency and reasonableness statements. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, like son. Motion carries. The next public hearing is 2025-10-CZM, Clayton Mixed Use Dominion Conditional Rezoning.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Conrad Almato, planning director. Before you is a re-conditional rezoning, 2025-10-CZM, Clayton Dominion, Clayton Mixed Use. It's a rezoning from what is currently CRM corridor commercial to what will be conditional commercial zoning district. The property is about 8.31 acres in size. It's currently undeveloped and vacant. And it's on the corner of Pritchard Road. Well, it's got three different, or four different streets there. You got Pritchard Road, Swan Trail, Waterfield Drive, and Collinsworth Drive. Tax ID is 16I02046B, NC PIN 177000180722. And there are some stars there showing where the property was posted. Here's a zoning map showing the current zoning district of CRM, and the proposed change to CZC. Here is the concept plan that is associated with this project. You can see it's a three-story building, 167 units. It is one complete building versus having different broken-up apartment blocks. And there's a detached commercial component as well, about 6,400 square foot in size. The, you can see, this thing works here. Oops. Okay. So here is Athletic Club Boulevard. Here is Collinsworth, Waterfield Drive, Swan Trail, and Pritchard Road. Just for orientation, this is, up here is the shopping center with the food line. And further south is the Riverwood, business communities and apartments and bigger neighborhood. So again, the proposed development here is 8.3 acres in size, three-story, 167 units. This will be a senior living multifamily use for the main apartment, and 6,300 square foot commercial building. The conditional rezoning has conditions that will restrict some of those uses to occur. There are currently, well, there is proposed 254 parking spaces, 246 are onsite, and 27 will be provided on-street. A total will be 273 spaces. The applicant proposes to do some incentives to meet the required number of onsite spaces. The open space, 11.5%, or about 40,000 square feet of the site, will be occupied by open space consisting of a clubhouse, athletic court plaza, and some central green space, where only 5% will be required. For access and infrastructure, there are three entry points that are planned with the right-in, right-out on Pritchard. Keep on pushing. Let me see. This will be the right-in, right-out down there. Pritchard Road will be provided with an additional 15-foot rideaway with improvements, including the 10-foot multi-use path. Collinsworth Road will be provided with an additional five feet of rideaway to include on-street parallel parking in the sidewalk. Waterfield Drive and Swan Trail will also be provided with five feet of rideaway. There are buffers here, the street skate buffers. Three canopy trees per 100 linear feet are being upgraded to a type, to the street skate buffer of two canopy trees per 100 feet, with four under-story trees per 100 feet, and 15 shrubs per 100 feet along all street frontages. There was a, there's some clarification with regards to the street skate buffer I'll go into in a little bit. Regarding the traffic improvements, transportation, a full traffic transportation impact analysis was not warranted due to it not crossing the thresholds of 100 peak AM or 100 PM peak hours, or vehicle trips, or not crossing to 1,000 vehicles in one day. And these fall below the thresholds of NC DOT standards, where there's less than 3,000 vehicles. In terms of consistency and compatibility, this is the medium-density residential future land use map designation. The project's residential density is 23 units, which does exceed that. So this would, while it's consistent, it's not consistent with the future land use maps that we would be updating the future land use map to align with the rezoning. Some staff highlights of the conditions of approval. The housing type, the site is limited to senior affordable multifamily housing. It's providing a variety of housing types for the town of Clayton. The density is being requested to be 23 and a half units per acre. And this is in alignment with the proposed, the UDO that did revise the density caps for this, for these types of uses. Certified Energy Star Multifamily New Construction Program will be provided to give a sustainability incentive. And again, the open space and amenities is also being increased. There are some road improvements, and there is an update to that as well, and I'll be able to highlight. And the buffers increasing from the street skate buffer to type B buffer. Applicant has committed to completion of a source study prior to approval of construction drawings and installation of required improvements. And the applicant is proposing only a certain number of permitted uses to occur on the property. Following the planning board recommendation on this- Following the Planning Board recommendation on this project, there have been, there was a revision to the conditions of approval to reflect some of the Planning Board's comments as well as a neighborhood meeting that consultants did have. This was scheduled to go before council on the 18th of August. They decided to, they wanted to have an opportunity to meet with the community again, so they asked for continuation to tonight. So tonight, I did get some revised conditions that I'll be able to go over that address some of the latest feedback that they've received. No changes to these conditions, just wanted to point out the limited age restricted and 23 and 1/2 units per acre. I'm sorry, 23 and 1/2 units per acre, yes, that's correct. This is regarding the less area that's set aside for active open space. And number 12 in section D, there's a commitment to provide a level-two charging station. So instead of a level-one or two, the applicants are providing a level-two charging station for EV vehicles. These are the restricted uses that would be allowed to occur on the property. These are some of the improvements that they're committing to with regards to traffic. So the CI, Romanite I, does have improvements, 2 Collinsworth Drive, that were following the Planning Board's recommendations. And this is the revision that was provided in the staff report, but is now revised where the applicant, instead of providing a fee in lieu, is gonna just go and, is going to commit to making these improvements based on staff approval. So just to clarify the, the level of commitment from the applicant at this time. So this is going to be a raised crosswalk with ADA landions across Athletic Boulevard on Collinsworth, from Collinsworth to Athletic Club Boulevard, and the two installed lighted stop signs will be per the MUTCD standards as well. And I just learned that acronym, so I can't repeat it because I forgot what it meant already. But it's Multi-Use Traffic Controlled Devices, something like that. Number 16 about completion of a source study. And moving along here, these are two additional conditions that they have provided as well following their neighborhood meeting regarding erosion, during construction, erosion and sedimentation control measures shall include double-silt fencing. And as well as fencing shall be provided around the perimeter of any stormwater retention ponds on the property. So should the rezoning be approved, the concept plan and the associated conditions of approval will run with the land in accordance with the state's, with NC State Statute, Chapter 160D. The Planning Board did make a recommendation of approval with, they did have some five conditions or part of their motion. I think the applicant has provided what they can to address, to respond to these comments. So this would be, the Planning Board did recommend approval with motion number two, approval while inconsistent with the comp plan. And that is the same recommendation that staff is providing, motion number two for Town Council, inconsistent but recommend approval of the project. Staff is available if you have any questions, and the applicants are here as well to provide you with any answers. I may not be able to.
All right, thank you. Any questions for staff? Mr. Sims.
Can you go back to the additions that the Planning Board?
What am I doing? I apologize. Let's see.
You're fine. On number five, where it says additions of ADA compliant ramps, is that more than what's, you're talking about more than what's required? Or, and if so, where are they talking about those are going to be at?
The one I can speak to is one that was just discussed with regards to the Collinsworth and Athletic Club Boulevard, where there'll be a raised, a raised crosswalk that they're proposing to provide. I will have the applicant give any more detail as far as how they were able to add any additional ADA compliant ramps, because I know there was a pretty robust discussion about that at the Planning Board.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Case.
Thank you, Conrad. Sorry for all the coughing and stuff. I did have a question. I don't know if this is you, maybe the town manager, or fire chief. I know that we obviously are having a, looking at building a northern, a northern public safety center out that way. Do we know the timing on that? I know we're obviously have another one we're looking at doing too, but just kind of, are we talking maybe, I know this is rough, you know, but is we talking three years from now, four years from now? Is there anything kind of?
So as of right now, we are in the preliminary stages of design, conceptual design and site. There's some environmental, there's a pond on the property that we're currently evaluating. Right now, it is in our five-year CIP, so I would say between now and 2030, it will be on the ground. To give you an exact date right now, I cannot, but between now and the end of the decade, it should be on the ground. We expect to advance design in the next year or so. Takes about, about a year between design and environmental permitting and all that. So we'd probably be bidding it out in about a year and a half to two years, and then about a year and a half of construction after that. So inside of four or five years.
Okay, thank you. I have no more questions.
Actually, if I can answer Mayor Protem Sims' question, I can answer that question from earlier. To answer the question, the improvements at that intersection are actually off-site, and according to North Carolina law, they are not required to make any improvements off-site. So their front-end improvements is all they're required to do. So if they go to the actual intersection, that's exceeding what they're required to do under North Carolina law. So that's why they're adding that condition in there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Archer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of questions here, Conrad. First of all, I just wanted to clarify that the current zoning of this parcel is CRM.
Yeah, that's correct.
Correct. Okay. And then what I have here for the use table for CRM is a 4.2.5, which has a long list of uses. I don't know, it's approximately 20 or so uses that includes things like convenience stores and auto repair shops and all that kind of stuff. So just wanted to clarify that table 4.2.5 is what could currently be constructed on the property.
Correct. Uses that are listed with the P in that table are permitted uses by right.
Okay. Thank you. And then one other question, you mentioned the, the hearing, the original hearing date got continued. Was that at the request of the applicant?
Correct, yes. Following the Planning Board meeting, staff met with the applicant and discussed, there was some discussion internally as far as what could be, what, how to respond to the Planning Board, et cetera, and they did request, following that meeting, that they wanted to ask for a continuation from the 18th to the tonight.
Okay. And then it sounded like during that time, they held an additional neighborhood meeting. Was that a required meeting, or was that on there, was that an optional meeting that they held?
That was not required. The requirement is before they give us their application, that they give us a neighborhood meeting as part of their application supplemental, so that was satisfied. So this was an additional neighborhood meeting that they decided to do.
Okay. And then I had one question about the traffic slide. You don't necessarily have to go back to it, but it was regarding the trigger there, the threshold that we use. I'm just confirming those are either, I know they're in our UDO, but is that a best practice thing? Is that based off NC DOT? How do we arrive at those?
So while I'm not a traffic engineer, I would say that they're the best practices. They exceed the NC DOT standards, and there's what we're vetted in as part of the UDO creation process. So I would find them that they're the best practice that we could do.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Ms. Anderson.
Yes. So you talked about the charging stations and from level-one to level-two. Is, were they required to put in charging stations, parking stations? Was that part of our UDO?
No, that's not a requirement of the UDO. That is found in our sustainability incentives, so those are optional.
And the reason for upgrading from level-one to level-two?
There was some comment from the Planning Board regarding level-one possibly not being fast enough charge.
Ms. Williams.
Yes, I do. I want some more information about the traffic improvement you mentioned before a few minutes ago about it fell below the threshold in your report, but also you brought up a condition, applicants coordinated with the NC DOT to improve the traffic patterns. I want to see whether some information that, for the record, that we need to know more about those two items.
For, I'm sorry, Councilwoman, which, which condition was it you're speaking to?
The condition about applicant coordinate with the NC DOT to improve the traffic pattern. That's a condition on the end of the presentation that you gave. The conditions, you go to the last slide probably. Keep going.
Not this one.
If I could jump in and help you both out, Conrad, I believe she's referring to one of the recommended conditions that came out of the Planning Board meeting, and that was further beyond these in the slideshow.
It's the same area that Protem Sims was addressing.
I would, I wouldn't have to ask the applicant probably to give some comment on that. In terms of, the town works within NC DOT, as I said, plans and construction drawings are under review. They were part of our comprehensive transportation plan with regards, so we did look at the, this project with regards to using the latest and greatest transportation plan. And then the recommendations that came out of the Planning Board, I'll allow the applicant to speak to those.
Conrad, I'll also chime in a little bit. So in, in the absence of having an engineering director and assistance engine director, I fill the role at that time, and I'll explain how the TIA review process works. There is a scoping form that is filled out. It's a form that is required by NC DOT if a project meets the criteria for requiring a DOT, if it meets DOT's criteria for a TIA. In this case, it did. So this form is filled out. It's a scoping form. That form is then reviewed by both the town as well as NC DOT to make sure that we agree to the benchmark criteria. Once those criteria are agreed to, a firm is then hired by the applicant to prepare the TIA. That TIA is then prepared, it's reviewed by NC DOT. There's several divisions within CDOT that will review it. There's also then reviewed by a firm that's hired by the town. It's a peer review. So it is reviewed. There are then revisions that are often made to that TIA, and there's comments. And what you will see is a bunch of requirements that came out of TIA that became conditions, and that was based of the review of the TIA. So it's prepared in accordance with DOT standards, UDO standards, and then we put conditions in there so that they're memorialized as part of a project, and there's no getting out of those conditions, if you will, and those requirements to ensure that they are installed as part of the project. More importantly, those conditions become law as part of the ordinance, and then the town can enforce those to make sure that they are constructed should this project be approved.
Any other questions for staff? All right, thank you, Conrad. I'll give the floor to the applicant.
My name is Banks Collier, and I am a Development Associate with Dominion, representing the project team today. Also in attendance is Sean Reinhardt, Vice President and Development Manager, as well as Adria Hollis, Development Analyst. We are also joined by our land use attorney, Amy Kraut with Smith Anderson, and the Kimley Horn Civil and Traffic Engineering Team, Michael Barnes and Kevin Dean. Thank you all for your time and consideration for this project. As you all know, we've been working with the Clayton community on this project for a handful of years now, and really with the overall goal of designing a project that, you know, aligns with the vernacular and functions of the neighborhood. This project received unanimous approval from the Planning Board on July 28th, and as you all know, we requested this project be deferred from the August 18th Town Council meeting to tonight to continue hearing feedback from neighbors and addressing questions or concerns. So we held that second neighborhood meeting on August 27th, and after feedback received both during the Planning Board and the second neighborhood meeting, we took immediate action and added additional conditions to our application, which we will cover later in the presentation and also that Conrad covered just a second ago. So just super quick, before I get into the details of our project proposal, I just want to share a few notes on who Dominion is for those that are unfamiliar and why we believe are the right partner for Clayton. So Dominion has been around for over 50 years. We are one of the nation's largest private developers, owners and managers of affordable multifamily housing for families and seniors. Today, we own and manage more than 220 communities across the country, which together provide over 40,000 homes. We are a vertically integrated company, meaning we handle a lot of things in-house, including construction, architecture, and property management. So having those teams under one roof really helps us keep quality high, and also means we're able to respond quickly when issues do come up at a property. And so really, a key difference between Dominion and many other developers is that we are long-term owners. So we are not your typical merchant developer looking to make a quick profit by building and selling, by building and selling. We stay, so when we build a community, we plan to be there for decades. And because of that, we, we truly make a good faith effort to be good neighbors. If there's ever a concern, you don't have to track down a corporate office. You know, council members, planning staff, HOA leaders, you guys have my cellphone number, you have Sean's cellphone number, and so alongside our onsite staff, you know, we're accessible, we're available, we can address any issues should they arise in the immediate. And what we are proposing today here in Clayton reflects exactly what Dominion is known for, and that's senior housing that is affordable without compromise, and a community that is thoughtfully designed, carefully built, and meant to serve residents in this town for years to come. So this project is located at the intersection of Pritchard Road and Swan Trail within the Riverwood Community. The site itself is roughly 8.3 acres, and we are proposing to develop it as a mixed-use community, which will include a senior independent apartment community along with horizontal commercial space. Today, the land is zoned corridor commercial, and we are requesting a rezoning to conditional commercial. You know, it's important to step back and to share a little bit of history about this property and why the proposed zoning and project represent the best and least intense use for this property and neighborhood. So this parcel has always been part of a greater master plan for the Riverwood community and intended for future development. So back in 2008, there was a site plan prepared for this property, and that plan was predominantly commercial with only a small portion reserved for senior living. And so under the current zoning, another developer could come in at any time and build a project that is 100% commercial. And if that were to happen, there are, you know, two main things to just keep in mind. First, that project would generate substantially more traffic and impacts than what we are proposing tonight. And then second, that developer would not be required to address or mitigate those impacts. So just next door, there is a commercial development currently under construction. Some of you may be aware of that, some of you might not. For those of you that are unaware, you know, really the reason behind that is, you know, that project did not require a public hearing, it did not require a Planning Board meeting or a council vote. It was allowed by right under the current zoning code, and the same would be true here today, and maybe it's not today. today, and maybe it's not today, you know, maybe it's not for another five years, but at some point, given the growth that Clayton is experiencing, a user could develop this property as all commercial with no public input, no conditions, and no additional traffic calming measures. So our proposal takes a different approach. We believe senior housing is the best and least intense use of this property, and we have gone further in terms of designing and conditioning, conditioning a site that is carefully integrated into the neighborhood with the goal of delivering the most beneficial project possible. So we, as a developer, are making improvements that are not required by code, and we're doing them because we really want this to be a project that's a positive addition to Riverwood and to Clayton. And just lastly, from a planning standpoint, this project does follow best practices, so good planning principles recommend that higher density uses be located at the edges of neighborhoods with lower density uses moving inward. Riverwood already has a mix of uses, and this site provides a natural transition that aligns with the community's overall progression and integration of uses. So we are proposing a mixed-use development consisting of 6,500 square feet of commercial space and 167 independent living apartment homes for seniors. This independent living community will consist of one- and two-bedroom units for seniors earning at or below 60% of the area median income within a single standing three-story conditioned corridor building with elevators. Within this community, residents will have access to a plethora of communal and in-unit amenities. So why here and why this type of housing? So these homes will provide high-quality housing to seniors that find themselves continuously outpriced by alternative housing options and are often on a fixed income. According to a 2023 study conducted by the Harvard Joint Center for Housing Studies, over 34% of U.S. households led by someone 65 or older were cost burden, meaning they spent more than 30% of their income on housing. Among senior renters, the situation is even more dire, with over 58% being cost burden. So seniors with these type of housing needs struggle in spending the significant portion of their income on housing versus, you know, medication, food, transportation. Based on CINCUS data, there are currently 6,855 and up residents who would financially qualify to live at this property in the Clayton area. So if we receive approval tonight and are able to provide 167 homes, that would only provide housing for 2.45% of that population. So currently, based on our market research and other supporting market research by nationally, nationally-held centers, there is a supply and demand imbalance for senior independent living communities. There really only is one true existing senior independent living community in the Clayton area, and they charge roughly $4,500 and $5,500 for a one- and two-bedroom apartment. There are a couple of single-family home neighborhoods being developed for seniors. However, those prices range anywhere from $370,000 up to $600,000. So even taking costs out of the equation for those single-family communities, many seniors, you know, no longer want to or can take care of a home, they're looking to downsize. Assisted living, memory care, all-inclusive retirement facilities, those cost thousands of dollars a month, and other market rate options are also extremely costly, and many of which are not dedicated to seniors only. And, you know, finally, there are a couple of existing affordable options in Clayton, but those are often operating with extensive waitlist and have limited availability. So I'd like to share a little bit more about who our resident is and the purpose of this housing. Said a little differently, I'd like to just clarify for folks what this housing is and what this housing is not. So what is this housing and who will live here? This community is exclusively for residents aged 55 and older. No children will live here. This community will provide high-quality, safe and fair housing for seniors that already live within Clayton. These residents are veterans, they're retired schoolteachers, small business owners, and lifelong Clayton residents who have raised their families here. These residents volunteer, they serve in local churches, they mentor schoolchildren, they organize neighborhood watch groups, plant gardens, and engage in wellness and social programs. These residents are not simply passing through, they are law-abiding, active community members who have helped shape Clayton over the years. So what is this housing not? This is not Section 8 housing, it is not assisted living, it is not public housing, and it is not transitional housing. Instead, it is an independent living community for active adults who deserve a home that matches their pride in the community. This community will include enhanced security measures such as visitor management systems, video cameras, and emergency response systems. In addition, this community will be ADA compliant and will include senior-focused design features such as grab bars and handrails in hallways to accommodate these senior residents. So these are individuals who have worked their entire lives, they're often living on social security or fixed incomes, who really just want to stay near their families. You know, based on income and rent limits set by the federal and state housing agencies, which range between $55,000 and $63,000, two retired seniors on a fixed income would qualify to live here. So I think Conrad did a great job of just giving a high-level overview of the concept plan, so I'm going to spend a little bit of time just kind of walking you all through our design process and just a key, a few key design features. So when Dominion first designed this site two years ago, the plan looked very different. It was denser, the building was taller, it had a bigger footprint, there was no commercial, limited buffering, and far fewer traffic improvements. The buildings were located much closer to the existing single-family homes, and the architectural style did not match the character of Riverwood. So in direct response to the feedback we received from the community, we made substantial changes. We reduced the building height from three stories to four stories. We also reduced the overall building footprint and density down from 200 units to 167 units. We pushed the buildings away from single-family homes and repositioned them along Pritchard Road. We added a substantial landscaping buffer around the entire perimeter of the site, and we also increased setbacks significantly from a minimum of 50 feet all the way up to 210 feet along Swan Trail, Waterfield and Collinsworth. We also moved the stormwater pond to the corner of Swan Trail to add additional buffering, and we completely redesigned the architecture so it aligns with the existing buildings in the Riverwood community. And then finally, we incorporated major traffic improvements to prioritize the safety of our future residents as well as existing families and children within the community, which I'll touch on in just a second here. So many of the conditions you see attached to this project are actually not required by code. A lot of them are self-imposed conditions meant to directly address the concerns we've heard from neighbors. So on density specifically, this project is limited to 23.5 units an acre, which currently under the UDO, there is no density restriction. This plan allows us to create a functional senior living community within a single-conditioned corridor building that includes elevators. The reduced building height and footprint also allows us to maximize open space for recreation and community use. We are proposing approximately 11.5% of open space and overall lot coverage of 21%, whereby the UDO only requires 5% of open space and a maximum lot coverage of 75%. So on setbacks specifically, the perimeter setback was reduced from 30 feet to 20 feet only along Pritchard Road to accommodate a more substantial landscaping buffer, but more importantly, to allow us to push buildings further away from homes. Along Swan Trail, Waterfield and Collinsworth, those setbacks start at 50 feet and stretch out to 210 feet. We, as Conrad mentioned, are upgrading the buffer, the landscaping buffer around the site, so we're going to be committing to a 20-foot tight-beat intermittent perimeter buffer around the entirety of the street, so, or site, excuse me. So that includes two canopy trees per 50 feet, four understory trees per 25 feet, and shrubs around the perimeter of the site, 60% of which have to be evergreen. We've also made significant traffic improvements that go well beyond what is required. This includes adding curb and gutter, sidewalks, bicycle lanes, and a multi-use path around the entire perimeter of the site. We've coordinated directly with NC DOT to add a right-in, right-out off of Pritchard Road. This basically will prevent cut-through traffic within the neighborhood, and this was a traffic component that we felt really strongly about and did not plan to move forward with this project if the right-in, right-out was denied by NC DOT. We have also added parallel parking along Collinsworth Drive. This directly addresses the fact that families and schoolchildren are currently using this area to park and walk to and from school, so this parallel parking provides a more formal designated parking area that's a safer option than parking in the grass. Based on feedback received during planning board as well as the second neighborhood meeting, we've added an additional condition to add a crosswalk on Collinsworth that connects across Athletic Club Boulevard to better protect families walking to and from school. In addition, we have also added a condition that requires Dominion to add lighted signage as well as adding a raised crosswalk directly across Athletic Club Boulevard. So based on what was presented earlier during this Town Council meeting, we feel this is a really great addition and really complete kind of the four-way crosswalk at that major intersection. So in order to construct these traffic improvements, Dominion is going to be using its own right-of-way for the necessary expansions to prevent congestion and really allow for adequate drive lanes and pedestrian traffic. So on Pritchard Road, we will be adding a multi-use path for both pedestrians and bicycles that already accounts for the future right-of-way expansion. So the building itself will be set back 45 feet from Pritchard Road as it exists today, and that distance will remain the same when, when Pritchard Road is expanded in the future. And on Collinsworth, as well as the other side streets, we will be expanding the right-of-way from 50 feet to 60 feet, and we're going to be using our property line to do that. So this really ensures that the proper street section with the 11-foot drive lanes, parallel parking, sidewalks and buffering all fits and basically prevents any future traffic bottlenecks. So with all that said, the concept we presented to you all tonight really reflects several years of refinement and addressing direct input from the community. These changes we've made are intentional and really designed to balance the needs of future residents along with the character and safety of the existing Riverwood community. Oh, I forgot about this slide. But yeah, so on the screen here, you can see, as I mentioned, per planning board, we will be adding that additional crosswalk, which is highlighted in red, and that'll make sure we can guide both residents and children and families safely across Athletic Club Boulevard, down Athletic Club Boulevard, and across Pritchard Road. And then we will be adding a raised crosswalk to the existing crosswalk that goes from Collinsworth to Pritchard Road. So Dominion spends a tremendous amount of time and resources making sure that our communities are designed with residents in mind, so we want our projects to maximize space, blend into the surrounding neighborhood, but most importantly, to provide a safe, comfortable and dignified home for seniors. So this community will include enhanced security features, it will have a visitor management system, video cameras, and emergency response systems throughout the property. This community will meet fair housing, ADA and accessibility requirements. So as I mentioned earlier, hallways will have handrails and grab bars so that our residents can move around safely and independently, and within each unit, for example, this will include step-in showers to also promote safety and mobility of our residents within their homes. Beyond safety and accessibility, we design communities that encourage connection and quality of life. So residents here will enjoy a business center, arts and crafts room, a fitness center, movie theater, library, and a club room with a fireplace and fully equipped kitchenette. Outdoors, there will be green spaces with pavilions, bocce ball, and grilling areas, places where neighbors can gather and spend time with their families. Inside their homes, residents will have everything you expect in a high-quality apartment, so this includes fully equipped kitchens with stainless steel appliances and movable islands, spacious bedrooms and bathrooms, walk-in closets, and living areas that feel open and inviting in addition to private balconies or patios. So really, the only difference between this community and a market rate development is that this land will be deed restricted for both income and age, so everything else, design, quality amenities, you know, these meet the same standard as a market rate community. And we really do this because we believe that every resident deserves dignity in a place that they're, they're proud to call home. So the next two slides just give you all a visual of what this property could look like. So another point that I'd like to mention is the fact that Dominion uses higher-quality materials than many other developers, as seen in these renderings. Because we are a long-term owner, we build communities that last. So our goal is not just to create housing, but to create a community that feels like it really belongs within the overall neighborhood. So a few examples of these higher-quality materials include Energy Star appliances, stainless steel appliances, state-of-the-art durable FFNE and fitness center equipment. Our roofing will have a 50-year useful life. We install LVP flooring in all of our units, plywood cabinet sink bases, granite countertops, and stone brick and fiber cement siding. So our goal really was to design a building that didn't have a corporate feel. Instead, the design is meant to align with the vernacular of the neighborhood, so we've incorporated pitched roofs and ensured building heights match the surrounding Riverwood buildings. In addition, we've added significantly more brick into the siding and signage, we've enhanced the landscaping, and we've paid really close attention to those details that really make this community feel warm, welcoming, and part of the Riverwood neighborhood. So before finishing up my portion of the presentation with an overview of the added conditions and consistency with the comprehensive plan, I would like to invite Kevin Dean up. He's our traffic engineer, and he'll add a few more details to the traffic considerations.
Hey, good evening, Kevin Dean, Kimley Horn, 1070 South Main Street in Holly Springs. I'll try to be brief, one, because Banks has covered most of it, two, because no one wants to hear from the traffic engineer any more than they have to. But briefly on traffic, our team has been out to the field several times. We went out last school year, and then following our neighborhood meeting last week, I actually went back out to see current school year operations last Thursday, so was out there for drop-off and a pickup, and you can see some of the stuff that's being experienced by the neighbors and folks going to the school now. A lot of folks parking along Collinsworth. You can see the long queue along Athletic Club Boulevard stretching back along and past Peyton Drive, so we're not oblivious to traffic concerns that are in the area, but we think our project goes a long way to fitting in well. One thing you can see at the top, our proposed development is expected to generate right at 700 total daily trips with 56 AM peak hour trips and 61 PM peak hour trips. Both of those are below the town thresholds for a formal traffic impact analysis. NC DOT's threshold is 3,000 daily trips, so as Conrad mentioned earlier, town standards are much stricter than NC DOT standards. But what we did do is have preliminary coordination with the district office and town staff on what the required traffic assessment would need to be for the sites. We looked at trip generation. The other thing you can see in this graph is compared to a plan that was proposed back in 2008, this proposed development, these numbers include the commercial component of the project. This project is going to generate well, significantly fewer trips than the plan from 2008. Part of that goes to the fact that senior adult housing generates significantly fewer trips per unit compared to traditional housing. So we prepared the memo in coordination with town staff and NC DOT. Banks has already mentioned the right-turn lane that'll be provided on Pritchard Road, and then some of the other stuff, I was going to walk through some of the pictures that I took out there last week. These are all lived experiences from the neighbors, so I'm not telling you anything you don't know. But top left corner is the morning carpool drop-off, and you can see I'm about where some of the, like the outdoor soccer fields are for the middle school, so the queue's already back there, we saw queues get much longer. Our project, as mentioned, generates significantly fewer trips than non-age-restricted units where would. Banks also mentioned the push to get an access onto Pritchard Road. What we think that does is alleviates the amount of traffic from our site that has to use Athletic Club Boulevard exclusively to enter and exit the development. So we think- So we think that's important. Top-right and bottom-left pictures are folks parking along Collinsworth Drive today. You can see folks parked between the no-parking-anytime signs. One thing we heard from residents is that Collinsworth Drive feels like a narrow street to drive. Certainly appreciate that, especially if you're navigating around folks that are parked on the street. One thing that Banks has mentioned, the on-street parking that will provide is a formal spot for those folks to park. It will take widening to achieve that, so we're not taking up space in the travel lane to provide that parking. That parking will be parallel, but technically off the street, off the travel lane, so we think that's important. And then, kind of to the question we heard earlier, talking about ADA landings, the bottom-right corner, not only can you see a no-left turn during school hours that is pretty frequently disregarded by folks, mostly folks turning into the school from Athletic Club Boulevard, but occasionally from folks turning off Collinsworth to go back towards Pritchard. But you can see how much folks have been forced to walk on the grass because there are no sidewalk provisions at that area today, and how much that has tracked up the grass. I can only imagine what that looks like on a rainy day. What our improvements will do with a paved landing there, it'll give folks a formal place to stand as they cross Collinsworth and then as they cross over Athletic Club Boulevard. The raised crosswalk that you're hearing us talk about, you've seen them. There's another one along Athletic Club Boulevard about 400 feet west of the Collinsworth Drive intersection. So it's something that's already on the street. It acts as some type of traffic calming because folks naturally have to slow to go across the raised crosswalk, but it's also a more formalized crossing. Staff has mentioned in an earlier discussion that there are teachers that are out there having to serve as crossing guards. So we're hoping that pedestrian improvements that we're making of this project make it easier for staff, safer for residents, and folks that are at the school. So happy to answer any questions you might have on that. We're going to turn it back to Banks.
So could you elaborate a little bit more on the paved landing there at that intersection in the bottom right-hand corner?
Yes, ma'am. So today, it's just grass and even the, so typically when you would expect an ADA landing, it would be paved and kind of channelized, you know, it'd go up at a slight angle to transition from the height of the sidewalk to the street. Today, there is technically a break in the curb, but it only takes folks to a grass landing, and even then, it's not maintained in a way that you would hope that a pedestrian landing would be. And so this facility would be paved. It would accommodate wheelchairs or strollers or bicycles for folks that may have crossed Athletic Club Boulevard. So we're hoping to keep, hoping to give folks an option, standing and waiting for their kids who might be walkers or folks who have used some of the on-street parking, to stand somewhere that isn't dirt, and when they're taking their stroller or their bicycle or their wheelchair across there, that they're not having to do that up an unpaved kind of ramp.
Approximately, what size is that landing going to be? Just roughly.
I don't have any idea. I don't do that. Usually, they're designed to fit roughly the width of a sidewalk, so you're expecting five to eight feet in there, so something like that.
That was helpful. Thank you.
Ms. Sims.
Yeah, could you elaborate? You said, "Pritchard Road."
The access. Yes, sir. So NCDOT's initial response, when we asked, "Could we have an access onto Pritchard Road", was no. Just gut reaction, they were not going to permit the site to have a right-in, right-out driveway on Pritchard Road. But as you heard, it was something that was important for Dominion, so we continued to meet with the district office, conveyed why we thought this was important, both to our project, but also to minimizing our project's impacts on Athletic Club, Collinsworth, Swan, and Waterfield. And so that was something that the district office ultimately got comfortable with and allowed us to proceed with in our designs for this project.
You said that, so I'm just curious here, the traffic that would come from the seniors wouldn't affect mostly around the school time because they don't, you're saying, and I'm trying to find out, what time do I get out, whatever, because I am in that senior number here. It seems like I don't, I must get out way too early.
So typically, what we're seeing, if seniors don't have school-aged children, they're not doing a lot of drop-off and pickup between 2:00 and 4:00, like we would see other folks in the neighborhood possibly having to do. But also, the nature, based on years and years of data, suggests that age-restricted dwelling units add less traffic between 4:00 and 6:00 PM than a standard units. I guess it's folks who aren't having to get a kid out to soccer practice or baseball practice or whatever it might be. I'm a few years away from that, so I haven't gotten quite into that trajectory, but that's what the data suggests.
Well, I'm all up in that number, and believe me, we get up, we get out a little bit. Thank you.
Ms. Archer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two questions for you. When you were out there gathering the photographs and whatever, did you happen to notice any of the carpool taking place at the Athletic Club parking lot? Did you happen to catch that?
I saw families walking across Athletic Club Boulevard, and I couldn't swear to where those families were walking to or coming from.
Okay.
But certainly saw, I saw students getting into cars way along Athletic Club Boulevard before mom and dad or grandma could get into the carpool lane, and then some of the queue being so far back towards Peyton. I mean, there are plenty of folks who are walking back there as well. But I honestly couldn't swear to where those folks who crossed over Athletic Club Boulevard were going to today.
Thank you. And then, are you aware of a May 2020 Riverwood Elementary and Middle School Traffic Operations Study?
I am not. No, ma'am.
Okay. I was able to obtain this from the school system, and it does present multiple safety recommendations as well as three alternatives for carpool traffic pattern stacking, which I don't see any of that in place in these photographs, so I was just curious if you were aware of that.
No, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other questions for him? All right. Thank you, sir. I think it's a good time, if you don't mind, Dolores, to bring the information that we've gathered from Johnston County Public Schools System as it pertains to the topic that we were talking about with all of the schools and what Andrea is referring to and all that.
Right. Good evening, Mayor. Dolores Gill here. I did have the opportunity on last Friday myself to go out and spend from about 2:00 to 4:15 observing all of the conditions around Riverwood Elementary and Riverwood Middle. Also during the week, had the opportunity to facilitate a collaborative meeting between Johnston County Public Schools District Leadership, which included Lee White, the former principal for about nine years at Riverwood Elementary, who's now in a area superintendent role, and also in attendance as members of our town police department and myself. And one of the things that we were able to do was to pull all of the prior reports that had been done, including the 2019 report. I think it was actually presented during COVID in 2020, and go over the historical pieces of information. Also talk with Ms. White about the current conditions and the changing variables. There have been several changing variables, such as a reassignment plan in 2022, which the population had ballooned to nearly or over 1,000, and then now is around 750 in the elementary site, and I think they're around 950 in the middle school site. So we were able to talk about the study. We were able to talk about some recommendations that they had taken from the study, their procedures, which I will say is phenomenal as a school, as a former administrator myself, able to watch the tremendous operation of that staff there and how well they handle the complexities of the situation. So in looking at also the collaboration that PD has had in meeting with PTAs, HOAs, being out there in the early weeks to monitor as well, indeed, we took a comprehensive look last week at everything. And one of the things that we feel is helpful is exactly what I was so encouraged to hear Kenzie, our assistant engineer, talk about this evening, which is that comprehensive traffic and pedestrian safety look, and really take a fresh look at this again for longer-term solutions, but also to consider some recommendations that both school staff have and PD have as far as how can we achieve even better results. So one of the things I wanted to say that at the direction of the town manager and with support from our mayor and council, it was my privilege to spend some time with district leadership, town leadership, including also engaging our public works department, looking at all angles of this situation. How can we take what we have done to improve it over the course of time, whether it's school or town efforts, and how can we continue to improve? So I think what we're looking at with some area improvements studies will help shine a light on it as well. And we are very encouraged by the collaboration that we experienced with all the voices around the table to try to come up with a really productive set of solutions. So I hope that helps to kind of give some updated information as to where we stand and how important it is to us as a town.
Awesome. Thank you. Banks.
Oh, I'm blind. Okay. So to finish up, I'd like to cover a few of the additional conditions that Dominion has committed to after the Planning Board and Second Neighborhood Meeting. We do truly understand a lot of the concerns that have been expressed to us on a handful of things, and most importantly, traffic. So in direct response to feedback from Planning Board, we have proposed a condition to construct a crosswalk with the ADA-compliant landing across Collinsworth Drive at the northwestern portion of Collinsworth and Athletic Club Boulevard. This location better serves both residents and schoolchildren, you know, given the feedback we've received in terms of concerns with traffic within Riverwood and especially on Athletic Club Boulevard, but really in front of that elementary school. So like I mentioned, this crosswalk will be fully ADA-compliant, and like I mentioned earlier as well, more broadly, this entire project is going to be ADA-compliant as well as accessible. So the next four conditions are all in direct response to feedback received during the Second Neighborhood Meeting. So the first is residents requested that we install a Type 2 EV charger, given these chargers have a higher standard in terms of their efficiency and charging capability. So we have since revised conditions to limit our project to install the Type 2 EV chargers versus the Type 1. You know, as mentioned previously, we did receive a lot of feedback on the traffic patterns and safety concerns within the Riverwood community and in front of that elementary school. So in response to these concerns, we plan on adding a raised crosswalk from Collinsworth to the other side of Athletic Club Boulevard, as well as adding lighted signage to this intersection as well. In direct response to concerns regarding flooding, particularly during construction, we have added a condition that requires our contractor to install a double silt fence around the entire perimeter of the site, so this will ensure that no mud, water, or dirt runoff adversely affects neighboring residents. And then as well on the neighborhood meeting, we received a few concerns from neighbors regarding safety as it relates to the stormwater pond and children in the neighborhood. So to prevent any risk of any children drowning, we will be installing a fence around the entire pond. And then in addition, we will be adding a wet pond fountain to really help with the visual appeal of the pond for those surrounding neighbors. So just super quickly, I'd like to touch on how we feel this project fits into the comprehensive plan. So the future land map calls for medium residential with a neighborhood center overlay whereby higher-density uses such as apartments be located near shopping and services. So in terms of consistency with the comprehensive plan, this project is consistent with gold, or, excuse me, Goal LU1, which is all about preserving Clayton's character while still allowing for growth. So we feel we have met this goal by really putting a strong emphasis on the design, quality, open space, and buffering of this proposal. In addition, we believe this proposal is consistent with Goal LU3, which encourages a range of housing types that meet the needs of different income levels and ages. So this plan specifically calls out higher-density apartments and neighborhood centers, especially when they're within walking distance to commercial uses. So just to wrap up my portion of the presentation, and I apologize if I sound a bit repetitive, but I just want to emphasize again with folks that we've been working on this project for several years, and most of the conditions that we've incorporated have been self-imposed, really to create a better site plan and a better project for this community. This proposal could be considered a downzoning in comparison to what could be developed by right today. You know, traffic from our project will be roughly half of what is currently allowed under the existing zoning, and we are committing to those additional conditions to improvements to address those traffic concerns. We have received a handful of questions and comments from community members on the history and development plans of this site. So to address those questions directly, Jim Anthony has requested to be here tonight and just shed some additional light. So thank you all for your time and consideration. I'll pop back up here for questions, but I'll turn it over to Jim to close this out.
Good evening, Mayor, Council members, and neighbors. My name is Jim Anthony. I live at 924 Vance Street in Raleigh. I'm the founder of APG Companies. For more than four decades, I've been deeply invested in Clayton as a developer, advisor, and neighbor. I own this property, which is the subject of the hearing, and I have for 30 years. I helped save two historic textile mills that still flank downtown, the Barber Textile Mill, now home to Deep River Brewing Company, which I helped start, and the Clayton Spinning Mill. I also developed the U.S. Post Office, preserved historic homes, and facilitated land transactions for the latest Novo Nordisk expansion. I brokered the sale of the Carolina Overlook Site, now the Dell Webb Community. Tonight, I'd like to begin with the story of Wayman Pritchard, the founder of the Raleigh Rescue Mission. He dedicated his life to serving some of the most vulnerable people in our area. His vision lives on, both in the mission and in the legacy of this property here in Clayton, which is now the site of Riverwood Athletic Club. That's why this road bears his name. It's our responsibility to honor that legacy with development that serves the community well. I believe that the Dominion Project not only serves that legacy that Mr. Pritchard built, but advances it. Riverwood's always been about health, family, and active living. Fred Smith had a vision, and I was proud to join him along with three other partners to acquire the first 1,350 acres of farmland that became this community. Fred intentionally placed the athletic and swim club, the commercial corners, and even a church site to anchor a vibrant, balanced neighborhood. That original vision still matters. It's why we must be thoughtful about how the remaining pieces of this community are From the beginning, the entry corners of this project were planned for commercial and retail uses. And under the current B3 zoning, the site already allows high-intensity development, apartments, retail stores, gas stations, tire shops, and other commercial uses, as you've heard. That's important context, but tonight is not about whether the site will be developed, it's how it will be developed. Change is never easy. Zoning decisions affect neighborhoods where families live, work, and raise children. It's natural to feel cautious, but the real question is whether the change makes Clayton stronger or not. Here are the facts. Under the current zoning, this family could host apartments along with many high-traffic commercial uses. The last project approved for this lot was a senior living community financed with 9% low-income housing tax credits, deepest level of affordability possible. That project was denied tax credits initially for technical reasons, but Fred and his partners reapplied across the street, and the 50-unit senior living community that exists today was built. In 2005, I sold the true corner across from the schools for a gas station, convenience store, and car wash. Was likely to have a sandwich shop in it as well. Eagles was the developer who bought it from me. Those uses are still permissible today without any rezoning, as we now know, because they are under construction for a small retail project, which our building will mirror to create an 18,000-square-foot neighborhood center on the corner. To this day, I've turned down tenants like Dollar General and Advance Auto Parts because I didn't believe they were the right fit for Riverwood. But make no mistake, those uses are allowed and could still move forward. But make 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 no mistake, those uses are allowed and could still move forward. Traffic's the number one concern I hear, and I want to be clear about this. The traffic issues at Riverwood come from the two overcrowded schools, not from this or any other property in the project. Those schools have more students, parents, and cars than anyone ever envisioned. That's a Johnson County School Board issue, and the solution is to build more schools and balance enrollment at new locations. By contrast, 167-unit senior living community will generate very little traffic. In fact, compared to the schools, it's a flea on an elephant's back. Even so, Dominion is committed to improvements, widening Richard Road, adding bike and walking paths, expanding stacking space, and installing crosswalks where none exists today. This project won't worsen traffic, it will actually help. I'm tempted to ask everyone in the room if they'd like to raise their hand, if they would prefer to see the allowable uses, or would they prefer to see the Dominion use? I think it's obvious which one I prefer. And if someone doesn't put their hand up at all, it probably means they'd rather look at the pine trees that are on the corner. I don't blame them, but that's not reality. Clayton is a community that cares. The fact that you're here tonight proves it. This council faces difficult choices nearly every time they meet, but in this case, I believe the choice is clear. Supporting this project means supporting seniors, supporting affordability, supporting thoughtful, balanced community growth. I urge you all to support Dominion and approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all again for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
None at this time.
Thank you all.
Oh, hold on.
Sorry.
No worries.
Yeah, no, I did not. Appreciate your presentation and the level of detail. I just had a few questions. So the timing of this project, and with respect to the improvements, the crosswalk improvements that are being conditioned, and then also the construction entrance, I would assume would be off the Pritchard Road section, not?
Um, yeah. So in terms of timing, we are anticipating a closing in spring of next year, assuming we all we have permits all in hand at that point, and it would be a roughly 20- to 24-month construction timeline. As far as accesses, that would all be directly off of Pritchard. You know, there would be restricted controlled use access on swan or water field for one-off deliveries or something like that, but 90% of your traffic is going to be coming off of Pritchard for construction.
Okay. And regarding the improvements, the crosswalk improvements and such, will they be made in the initial phase of the construction, or they be made in the latter phase of the construction, or how's that?
Um, they would be made during the the site improvements portion of the project, so towards the beginning.
Okay. Okay. I mean, obviously, there's some concern with some of the housing that's single-family residential housing around that. I mean, I guess, construction timeframes, times, I mean, do they typically get going at 6:00 in the morning, or what's the it sounds like you said you own your own construction crew, so there's
Yeah.
Is there some flexibility in that, or some?
Yeah, so I can talk a little bit about the construction mitigation efforts we put into place. You are correct, we have a joint venture with a contractor called Weiss. They're a very well-respected, experienced, multi-family developer. But a few examples of the mitigation efforts, so fencing, like I mentioned, we're going to be committing to that double silt fence around the entirety of the site to help prevent any sort of runoff. You know, access will all be directly off of Pritchard Road. In terms of school impacts, there's going to be close coordination with the schools to just make sure our suppliers are avoiding coming to the site during peak drop-off and pickup pickup hours. Employee parking, so we're going to ensure that employee vehicles and construction equipment are parked onsite and only offsite where there's been prior authorization given, so not on any sort of adjacent streets. Hours specifically, so there is no noise Monday through Friday prior to 7:00 a.m. And on the occasion when there is work on Saturdays, no noise can take place prior to 9:00 a.m. So typical completion is usually around 4:00, 4:30, and we don't do any sort of Sunday work. And then the last thing is dust control. We monitor and water the site as required during dry dust periods, just to prevent any sort of concrete, or excuse me, any sort of dust flying up and impacting the surrounding single-family homes.
Okay, thank you. With respect to the to the chargers, car chargers, is that for the Dominion project themselves, or is that more communal? How's that?
It's just for the Dominion project.
Okay. Okay. I want to take a little bit deeper dive into the income-based housing. So I have some knowledge with income-based housing for for some of my family members. Is this for working, or I mean, what's the I guess, what's the general demographic? Obviously, 55 and up, I get that. You know, the one that I'm more experienced with is, you know, a lot of these retirees, they're living on social security, they don't work, some of them, a lot of them don't even drive because they're at the age where they are unable to drive. Can you kind of discuss and kind of go a little bit deeper dive into what you typically see in these communities and how that's, you know, kind of going?
Yeah, absolutely. So this project, 100% of our units are going to be restricted for income and rent levels for seniors 55 and up. And so you are correct, you know, we see a lot of seniors that are retired, some of them are still working, but majority of them are on a fixed income. And so in terms of qualifying them to live at our property, we also account for assets, so selling a home, any sort of retirement accounts, anything of that nature can actually go towards their income qualification levels.
Okay. Okay. And let me see, hold on, I'm drawing a blank. Okay, no, that's that's helpful. When on the site plan, I didn't really show where there's a refuse collection. I saw the one for the for the retail part, but I did not see one on the on the project itself.
So for the refuse collection, so for the residential specifically, all of the refus will be taking place interior to the building. And really, the, you know, there's a couple of reasons for that. You know, one, we want to mitigate any sort of smell pollution or visual visual pollution to surrounding neighbors, so that's all kept within the building. And then also, our senior residents, you know, you know, they're active adults, but some of them may be less mobile, so we just want to provide direct access close to their units within the building to throw away their trash. For the commercial, and let me see if I can do the, there we go. For the commercial specifically, you can see the dumpster enclosure up towards Pritchard Road, and that will be fully screened.
Okay. Thank you. And back to the, and I kind of remembered what I was going to ask, with respect to the demographic, the the age level, what are your, I know with my situation, I had to fill out a bunch of paperwork, obviously, because it's the way it's subsidized for my for my mom, but is it, what other type of screening requirements are you going to have for the tenants that are there, other than, of course, age?
Yep. So outside of age and income, all of our residents have to undergo a background check as well as a credit check, a formal residential history check, and they also have to prove they can earn two times the rent for that given month.
Okay. Okay. Next, kind of pivoting to the the drainage, one of the one of the neighbors brought up some drainage issues kind of towards the southwest of the of the project. Just want to know, I guess this is curb and gutter, so I don't know if you have a stormwater engineer here tonight, but just kind of understanding that, you know, there's obviously going to be more impervious service with this site. I mean, how is that going to be mitigated? I understand, I appreciate the double silt fence, that's something I commonly ask when a development project comes comes here. But in regards to the long term, I know there's a stormwater pond. I mean, is it going to be worse, less, the same from a from a stormwater runoff situation? I know a lot of these times, you know, at least we've been told that, you know, once these projects come to fruition, their stormwater is is less intense than it was before because it's going to storm.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I'm going to let our expert civil engineer talk about stormwater because he'll do a much better job of it.
Thank you.
Hey, Michael Barnes here with Kimmelhorn. Yes, the stormwater pond will be in place to treat the stormwater, and that'll be to all UDO required levels. We will attenuate to, I'm not exactly sure what the UDO says, but it'll it'll cover everything in the UDO. So all stormwater will be attenuated to the pre-development as required, and then it'll be treated as well for nitrogen.
Okay. So then, obviously, there's going to be stormwater drains from these these parking sections over here that you see.
Yep.
There'll be curb and gutter, then there's obviously going to be the buffer, but it's going to, is it going to be sloped, I guess, to go to that?
It'll all have curb drains and underground pipes that will pipe it to the pond.
Okay. So in your professional opinion, is this going to be the same or better than at the existing site right now if some of the neighbors are already having flood issues, or could they be coming from the road? I don't know, just whatever.
It will be the same as it is, just slightly better, I would say. So whenever you, whenever we design one of these ponds, you have to treat the levels down to pre-existing condition, so what it is on the site today. So that's what the pond will be will be doing. It'll treat it down to existing condition.
Okay. So I don't, I drove by there, but I didn't recall seeing a ditch or anything, so I don't know if it's just flat slope, of course. There's nothing to kind of prevent it from running into the neighbor's yard, but it sounds like with what you're going to do, you're going to make some improvements.
Yeah, all stormwater or all rain that falls on the site will be captured on the site and treated on the site through that pond.
Okay. Okay. I don't think I have any more questions at this time. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, or?
I have one more question here by Ms. Archer.
My apologies.
No worries.
And I meant to ask about the staffing at the facility in regards to both just kind of monitoring for safety purposes as well as repair and maintenance. What would you, how do you all handle that?
Yeah, so we'll have a full maintenance team. So we'll have a maintenance supervisor, and typically for a development this size, he'll have two technical maintenance guys below him, so a team of three. And then as far as the property management team is concerned, we'll have a community manager as well as a leasing assistant.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for this young lady? All right. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Yes. And now, if anyone is here this evening that would like to speak on this topic, if you please step forward, state your name and address for the record. And if you would please limit your comments to three minutes each.
Chaffin Allen, 292 Stansberry Lane. Tonight, you're going to hear people speak about this project, about the problems they see, the concerns that they carry, and the impact that it'll have on their lives. Before we listen to all their concerns, I want to offer a little bit of something different. I want to offer some perspective, because while tonight's topic is about development, the truth is, what we're really talking about here tonight is trust. We're talking about how decisions are made, who they are made for, and whether the people impacted by those decisions are truly being seen and heard. I want to speak for just a moment about what it means to serve the public fully. Too often, in spaces like this, we enter the room with our minds already made up. We hear just enough to say that we've listened, but not enough to change, be changed by what we hear. That's not listening, that's just waiting to respond. That's a dangerous thing, to walk into a room that affects people's homes, families, and futures with your minds already made up. In my classroom, if I choose not to listen one day or dismiss a child that says, "I'm tired," or "My back really hurts," I might miss something critical. But when I choose to ask one simple question, "Why," it changes everything. Why didn't he sleep? Because he's watching his two younger siblings while his parents work a night shift. Why does that child's back hurt? Because they are being abused in the home in which they live. But because I ask those simple questions of "why," we, me, and people were able to get and find resources for that mother to find a new job that allows her to be home with her children at night. We were able to get that child help and his mother out of an abusive household. So tonight, I'm asking all of you, public servants, community leaders, decision-makers, to take a breath, take a step back, and just ask the question, "Why? Why is this raising concern for the residents of Riverwood? Why do people who come to these meetings and address this council feel unheard? Why do some believe that this development will benefit others but not them? But why not? Why not build a process that invites but not excludes? Why not create a development that works with communities rather than over them? Why not use our time not to win a debate, but to build a bridge? We can't undo what's been already said, we can't control every emotion in this room, but we can choose right now to be better stewards of this moment. This is about land, yes, but it's also about legacy, and that legacy begins with one question and one word, "why." Ask it with intention, ask it with courage, and you just might unlock the answers that this community has been waiting for. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Becky Williams. I live at 100 Elway Drive. I will say that I wrote this before some of the changes that Dominion has already made, so I do want to disclose that, so you know. First, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I deeply appreciate your service to the town of Clayton, your commitment to providing an open forum for community engagement. I do not envy the challenges you face balancing growth, resident needs, and legal/statutory requirements is no easy task. That said, I'm here this evening to voice my concerns about Dominion's request for rezoning to build another apartment community in Riverwood. Development should never come at the expense of our town's character, our environment, our infrastructure, or our quality of life. As our local representation, I appreciate your willingness to hear our concerns and would like to take a few minutes to share thoughts about this project. Traffic and safety, as you've heard, are of the utmost importance to Riverwood residents. Each new development adds congestion, increases risk for both children and adults, and slows emergency response times. Yet, no traffic study has been completed for this project, and the impacts of other approved developments along Pritchard Road have not been considered. We have a significant amount of construction ongoing on Pritchard Road, so it's a bit remiss and short-sighted to only consider this one project when thinking about additional building. Dominion has argued that residents age 55 and older will not significantly impact traffic, but if the average age is expected to be around 55, many of these residents may still be commuting to work. And for those who are retired, the development is marketed as a place where grandparents can live their family, which means frequent trips for school pickups, errands, and family activities. Would also like to note, I feel like we keep saying senior living, 55-plus. 55 is not senior. This is 2025. I would think of seniors as much older. At the July 28 Town Planning Meeting, it was stated that services and infrastructure follow growth. With respect, that is not true. Sustainable development requires infrastructure first, adequate utilities, schools, emergency services, and roads. Growth without planning is not progress, it is a burden on current residents. For example, our stormwater system is already failing. In my own yard, I have seen severe flooding, erosion, and large gaps forming under my fence installed just five years ago from the flooding from that particular lot. I'm directly across the street from this proposed building site. If the system cannot handle today's conditions, how can it manage the runoff from another dense apartment complex with numerous impervious surfaces? In addition, according to public records I requested, crime calls in this area rose from 1,362 in 2021 and 2,314 in '24, nearly doubling in a few years. I understand my three minutes are up. I have like two paragraphs. May I finish?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Adding density without addressing this issue places additional strain on law enforcement. Dominion is promoting this project as walkable to nearby amenities, but with rising crime, is it really safe? I understand that many think this apartment is a better option, but it's unlikely someone for a commercial property would funnel traffic through neighborhood streets, much as this is doing. And unlike apartments, commercial options could serve daily needs of residents. I'm not asking that you deny this rezoning request. What I am asking is that the vote be delayed so we can better understand how this project is going to impact us as residents. If you feel compelled to approve this rezoning, I respectfully request that it be conditional with the following requirements. A full traffic assessment that includes new developments along Pritchard Road and the retail expansion near the Food Lion Plaza. near the Food Lion Plaza. They added a Dunkin' Donuts. We know that's gonna make traffic much worse. A Phase One environmental assessment to fully understand the environmental impact of this project. Limit access points to Pritchard Road as we would be required for commercial development. Safety and beautification features for the retention pond, so it blends with the neighborhood. They've, as I said, they have made some changes, which I appreciate. A tight-sea semi-opaque buffer on Swan Trail, Waterfield Drive, and Collinsworth Drive where homes face the property. Thank you again for allowing me the opportunity to share my concerns, and I'm happy to engage further should any of you like to reach out.
Thank you.
Hi, a quick question. Can I get the map up to talk to something on the map? The, just where the development is? And I'll talk while you load it. My name is Ed Palmetiere. I live at 124 Elway Drive, about seven houses down from, this proposal, perfect, right there. I have two kids that go to school. My son is in seventh grade at Riverwood Elementary. My daughter's in, at Corinth Holder, but she also did four years, or went to elementary school for four years. I'm the P T S A president for Corinth Holder, and I'm also on the parent advisory committee. Real quick, I had a couple of things. I talked to Kenzie briefly about some ideas to make it safer for the kids. One suggestion that I would like to make is the Collinsworth from Manning to Athletic Drive. I would suggest making it one way away from the schools that would have traffic go out, you know, they can go up, up and around out Pritchard or back into the subdivision around. Right now, if you, I think the gentleman here said he was out there watching it, picked, someone would pick up their kid, they would get back into traffic, try to get back into wherever they live or leave the subdivision. But that's a congested area. A lot of kids walk there. If you made it just that one little section, one way away from the schools, I think that would help out. So that's a suggestion I hope you would consider. Okay, got a minute. Concerning backyard flooding, like, like she just mentioned, my back, all of our backyards on Elway Drive on this side flood. I was gonna bring it up at a different meeting, and this just kind of coincided with something. I've got pictures and videos. I don't know how to submit them, to talk to them, so if someone could help me out there. And even two weeks ago, when it was storming, I asked a neighbor to go film it, and you can see Elway Drive from Swan, I mean Swan Trail, from where the development goes, it floods right on the corner of Waterfield and Swan. Right now, the, the road floods right now. I'm concerned with the extra water that would come off from, like she said, the, the different surfaces. I, I don't know, but I'm assuming that, that would, the pond fills up, and then the runoff goes from Waterfield underneath Swan Trail behind all our houses. And then my house is on the corner, so that's where all the water ends, and it floods now. I'm assuming it's just gonna get worse because of that, so I would hope we look into that a little bit more. I, I've already, when I put a fence in, I offset it from the property line where the ditch is 10 feet already, and I had to put a berm, you know, I shoveled dirt and made a berm so that it doesn't come up into my backyard, but it kind of still does. And I think that's just gonna be worse for me because I also get runoff from Pritchard Road that way. And I've got pictures and stuff. I'd like to submit it. It kind of goes along with this, but it's, it's, it's also a little bit separate. So anyway, eight seconds, that's my time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the Town Council. My name is Granville Bush, 332 Collinsworth, Clayton, and I'm a resident of the Riverwood Athletic Club community, living just nine doors down from the proposed development. I want to make it clear tonight that I, as part of the community, am primarily concerned with the development of more rental units in the neighborhood. When we talk about affordable housing, we should be talking about the ability to buy a home, not just rent one. We know this land will be developed eventually, but the community deserves a voice in how that happens. Ownership creates long-term investment in the community and aligns better with the true affordability of homeownership and the future of this community. I'd like to suggest that condominiums or townhomes owned by individuals would be a better benefit to the community at large compared to even more rental units. In the presentations earlier today, traffic was addressed, and it was noted that the development was under the threshold needed for a traffic study, but it showed that net new traffic nearly doubles under the plan. I want to make sure that it's also mentioned that there is already a senior housing development right across the street, potentially with vacant units. And overall, I feel that the planning board did not adequately consider the impact of this development. Dominion has admitted they'll rely on acceptable minimums in planning and design, meaning they'll do the bare minimum to get the project approved. That's not community investment, that is cutting corners. Dominion did the minimum required to notify nearby property owners. Of the roughly 111 mailings sent, only 33 went to actual people. The rest, 78, went to corporations, including over 35 notices to a single company, Riverwood Ranch Town Homes LLC. Some went to corporate owners outside of the state even, while nearby homeowners like myself received nothing. I live just 160 yards away. Dominion has claimed that they intend to invest in our community, but based on their actions, that simply is not true. Genuine investment requires either financial commitment or proximity. Dominion offers neither. The development plan is reliant on government-based, government-sponsored tax credits. These tax credits greatly reduce their financial stake, making them less invested in the long-term success of the project. Their model likely involves building with cheap materials benefiting from tax deductions for up to 30 years, then selling off the property. Meanwhile, they'll collect rent from low-income tenants, which is hardly a meaningful community contribution. I have a client who works in this space, and I can tell you, these projects are designed for profit, not quality. Dominion, being vertically integrated, will cut costs at every stage to maximize returns. This means lower-quality construction, minimal amenities, and short-term residents on one- to two-year leases, adding strain to the roads and overcrowded community resources like the pool and gym. I'm afraid that the planning board was too eager to approve this development. Members of the planning board seemed more frustrated by past failed development plans and attempts than focused on the real lasting impact of this project. We ask you to take a closer look at what this project truly means for our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Steve Williams. I live on Collinsworth. Nice to talk to y'all tonight. I have several comments. That corner where they're gonna put the retention pond is already a wetland. So it already collects water and it basically acts as a pond, and there's water in it constantly. There would need to be some mechanism to drain the pond after a heavy rain so that the pond cannot just overflow and just run off on all of our houses. Most of our construction in our neighborhood is slab-on-grade, so we have about three inches above ground level, and then you'd have water running in our homes. Our homeowner's insurance will not cover flooding. I don't live in a flood zone, but if you create a flood zone, I might. I have the traffic. I have very serious reservations about the traffic. There's tons of kids that just walk home, little elementary school kids, a lot of them unsupervised, the parents aren't there. The, the, the third grader's probably walking and holding the hand of the kindergartner down the street, and more traffic, it's just bad. They're unpredictable. I've lived there for years. You never know when, what they're gonna do. And parking on the street, Collinsworth is very narrow. And if you widen it just to put in a parking lane for people to parallel park, and they can't do that very well anyways, at least most people can't. And you have a line of cars there, and you're driving down Collinsworth, and it's narrow. You, so you're gonna have, if you meet a car, you have to be on the very edge of the road. Most people run off the road. I hear them from inside my house running off the road all day long. But if you've got cars parked and you gotta get real close to it, and there's a kid out there, and they stick their head out between two cars, you can't even see them, I worry that one day I'll drive, drive down the home, the road to go home and run over some kid. And then hell, maybe I'll go to jail. I think I'd rather you build a Harris teeter and put up some nice huge trees like they did at Flowers, and put that there. I don't need 300 more people living in my front yard. Just don't. That's it.
Thank you.
Mayor, council members, thank you for allowing me to speak. Lynn Massagill, I live at 205 Boswell. I'm in the Riverwood community, but in the back. But I have lived there for over 20 years, and I've seen the development grow and expand. Nothing like I have seen them expand in the last five to six years. The traffic assessment that we have talked about this evening, that is the bare minimum that we don't have to do, was completed. The data came from 2008 from D O T. So the amount of growth that has happened from 2008 and the inclusion of the retail space across the street, and I listed that. We plan to have a public safety center. We already have a, an urgent care center. We already have a Dunkin' Donuts coming. We have expanded the population of our schools, and we've expanded the population of Riverwood proper, from 900 houses to almost 1,900 houses. So when you look at that expansion since 2008, we're creating a safety nightmare at that intersection. And then tonight, I hear that there's going to be a fix all the way around that property. Is it going to be another visual obstruction to a right-hand turn off of Pritchard Road onto Athletic Club Boulevard? And then you have the students that are going to be chasing to go to Dunkin' Donuts and from Dunkin' Donuts in the morning. How many middle school parents are gonna drop their kids off at Dunkin' Donuts, let them grab their breakfast and walk across the street to school? And then in the, the meeting that we had the other night, the, the residential meeting, one of the employees of the development company of Dominion said that the reason that there's not going to be much traffic in, around this Dominion is because the aging population that will live there doesn't really want to be around kids. They're across the street from an elementary school. There's going to be noise. There's going to be kids. So how do we accommodate that? I don't think any of the residents, maybe some, but not many of us that live in Riverwood, we're not against development. We're against responsible development. And the, and I applaud the committee that's working on school safety there. That needs to happen around Riverwood Elementary and Riverwood Middle School, but it needs to happen before we have a development with another 170 units there and more traffic and more confusion and stormwater runoff. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Lindsay Logan Allen, 292 Stansberry Lane. I actually want to start with a moment of gratitude, and that goes actually to Banks with Dominion. I shared with her in the most candid ways. Sorry, I just want to be able to look at you and give you this feedback. I really shared with you in a very candid way of, you know, how parents, staff, students felt just so at a dismay of trying to navigate these traffic concerns. And to see that you were able to create a bridge with the town tonight and offer a solution that, from the bottom of my heart, as a parent and a spouse and educator, I just want to say thank you, because that has been years coming. So I just want to acknowledge that. Thank you. And let me get to my speech. We are, again, we're not anti-growth. We know that Clayton is growing, and growth is so, so good. What we're asking for, again, is just safe and responsible, thoughtful planning that protects our students and our families and our neighborhoods. And for me, again, what is concerning is that this project is being reviewed against that 2008 traffic assumptions. In 2008, again, Clayton had 15,000 residents, and we have about 32,000 right now. Since then, we've also added Walton Farms in Riverwood, Riverwood expansions in the neighborhood, Ashcroft, which also uses our neighborhood services, so they're providing additional traffic in, new townhomes across the street, the 55 Community River Haven, Wake Med Urgent Care, Riverwood Shops Phase Two, and none of that did exist in those 2008 plans. So the current traffic memo prepared by Kimley Horn and signed by engineer Craig Honeycutt in June 2025 estimates 688 daily trips. Because that falls below the threshold, it claims a full traffic impact analysis isn't required. On paper, that is correct, but in practice, it is fatally incomplete because it does exclude 680 daily school carpool trips, 300 in the morning and 340 in the afternoon. Those numbers were confirmed by Ms. Pollak and Ms. Sawyer this afternoon. It excluded the residential and commercial growth I listed, and it excludes cut-through traffic, which is flooding our neighborhood streets as trivers are really trying to avoid Pritchard and Covered Bridge. We've also heard that, you know, Clayton's standards are stricter than N C Dot's, which we're grateful for. A thousand trips compared to 3,000. That is true on paper, but by presenting this project as 688 trips, the developer sidesteps both of those standards. In reality, with the school and the surrounding growth, this corridor is already well above a thousand trips. I do want to call out that I did hear that it is suggested that a school, this is a school board problem. I want to note that school capacity is not the same as traffic engineering. Whether a classroom has 20 or 30 students, the same number of parents, buses, and staff will still funnel through these intersections. So what determines safety here is not class size. The school is actually under capacity by a good bit, and we're really grateful for that. It is how that traffic flows and where vehicles stack and how pedestrians cross and whether emergency vehicles can get through. Those are transportation issues, and those are the responsibility of our town. I do want to say thresholds are not safety standards. They are minimum triggers. Being below threshold does not erase unsafe crossings, carpool chaos, or these delayed emergency responses. So from a planning and engineering perspective, the conclusion for me feels clear that a full traffic impact analysis should be required, and I ask that of you. Again, this is not about stopping a development. It is about ensuring that this growth and this development is done in a safe way, recognizing that the area is heavily congested, and we don't want to add to that congestion. And I just want to say thank you. Again, thank you again to Banks for starting that conversation.
My name is Margaret Watkins. I don't live here, but I just wanted to, I wanted to come and weigh in on this plan because I had heard a lot about it on social media. I have battled Bob the Builder for going on five years now, so I'm constantly looking over plans like this and weighing in on them. I want you guys to know that I hate development. I hate change. I am anti-growth. But this plan that I heard here tonight was a fantastic plan compared to what I'm getting where I live. 60% AMI, that's unheard of. I've only seen that in one other plan. The ADA fitted, the right-in, right-out, the fountain. I don't understand why Bob the Builder doesn't like fountains, but they don't. I can't get one of those. I heard, I heard what the neighbor said about the trust. Trust is built over time. You have to You have to communicate with your staff in order to build that trust. And I actually met with your, um, entire planning department last week and I was very impressed. And I applaud the work that they did on this plan and I applaud the developer. Um, I heard folks saying, you know, that you guys came in here with your minds made up. I know what it looks like when an elected official comes in and their mind is made up. They're not sitting here for an hour asking questions. You guys, I mean, a lot of you guys asked questions. I think every one of you did. Um, there was a second neighborhood meeting. That was done out of the goodness of the developer. Um, you know, taking care of your seniors is part of taking care of your community. Um, the only change that I could possibly see the developer doing is if they would make the, um, housing 65 plus. I think that would take care of some of the concerns over the schools. This is the kind of development that you want when you have overcrowded schools. This is not going to add school age children, and I think some of you guys cover that too. So I won't go any further and keep y'all here, but, um, again, I just wanted to thank the planning department for meeting with me and I wanted everybody here in the audience to know that they care about you guys. If they didn't care about this community, they would be working for Bob the Builder, not for the town. Cause they're making about what $30,000 to $50,000 less a year, working, taking care of the community versus taking care of Bob. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Amanda Massengill. I live at 205 Boswell Lane. Um, thank you for allowing me to speak. Um, just real quick, I understand that there's supposed to be some parallel parking. Um, in a high-traffic situation, I feel like that will back things up while we're waiting for those parking, people to park and that that will create an issue of confusion for the kids, the little kids. They're not really gonna navigate around that the same way that, you know, adults would. Um, and then the other thing that I also have concerns is there is the proposed new crosswalk. Once the kids get there, where will they go? There's not, unless they live or their grandparents are in those buildings, they're not going to be going there. They're gonna have to cross the street again. And we're talking about, you know, little, little kids. So I really encourage you to take a look at that and, and that the fact that those kids, once they cross, where are they going? They're not going into the apartment building more than likely. I don't want a lawsuit that we're gonna end up having to pay for if something like this happens. And there's already been a death on that street, um, on Athletic Club Boulevard. And I just pray that you would not make any decisions tonight so that more information can be gathered because the last thing we need is a child or an elderly person, you know, to get hurt again. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is James Papas. We live on Collingsworth. Um, may I ask the developers a question? Do you plan on dumping traffic out on to Collingsworth from your development or onto Waterfield Drive? You have ingress and egress on those roads?
Well, one on Swan Trail and then the right in, right out of Pritchard Road.
So no one's gonna pull out on Pritchard Road. They're gonna come on Collingsworth and they're gonna come out on, you're gonna increase traffic in a residential neighborhood where there's a ton of kids living already. Okay? And that's part of the problem. And I don't know where they're getting their numbers from, but when I see 167, uh, units, that's at least two cars per unit. So you're, this 200 and some cars are gonna be parking down the street. There's not enough parking there. You're also putting, you're taking all land and converting it into roof space and concrete. That retention point's not enough. I don't see an environmental impact study here. I don't see a traffic study. And they're gonna dump traffic out into our neighborhood. We, we're 70 years old. We came down here to help our grandchildren. I don't know where they get these bizarre ideas that we don't drive anywhere. I put on 30,000 miles a year. All right? We're moving all the time. We're more active than people that work because you guys are at your jobs all day. We're out doing things. It's a problem in that neighborhood of putting that much traffic around those kids. You've got a school there for God's sake. Think of those kids and think of the kids that live in that neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, no one else wishing to speak. I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to council for discussion. Mr. Casey.
I had a few more questions to the applicant, if that was okay?
Yes, sir.
Um, appreciate the public comments and obviously brought up a few things. So one thing I wanted to, um, if y'all didn't mind addressing is just that traffic assessment, that 2008 traffic assessment.
Yep, no problem. I'm gonna invite Kevin up to discuss that.
Hey, Kevin Dean again. So our traffic assessment was done in June of this year based on the latest data from the Institute of Transportation Engineers. What we compared from 2008 was a development plan that was submitted in 2008 for reference to what traffic could be generated by permitted uses on the site. So there was a previous plan considered for the site in 2008, among others, that generated X volume of trips. Our analysis is based on the most recent data from the Institute of Transportation Engineers, which is town, state and federal standard for this type of analysis. So 2008 is in there for a reference. My memo was written three months ago.
Understood, thank you. So, and also in that assessment, how do you factor in other surrounding development or proposed development, developments that are approved, um, in that assessment? Can you, can you talk about that a little bit?
Great question. So, uh, for developments generating less than 1,000 daily or 100 peak hour trips, there's no formal intersection capacity analysis, which is when you're accustomed to hearing us talk about area approved developments for projects generating less than those thresholds, there is no formal analysis. We acknowledge certainly there are other developments happening, but there's no capacity level analysis that would otherwise account for that. So that's not in the ordinance to, that would require that level of analysis at these few trips.
But do you do a growth factor or, I mean, what's the, I mean, I'm sure there's gotta be some sort of growth factor algorithm you plug in on some of these.
So for the, based on the ordinance, there's no actual analysis where we're looking at existing traffic counts plus growth plus approved developments. This memo reflects conditions related to our site, trip generation, multimodal improvements, um, how long the right turn lane should be on Pritchard Road, but there is no formal analysis that would get into things like growth.
Okay.
Additionally, when we had our consultant review, the analysis, we restricted some of the uses that are restricted or not permitted. It was drafted, the conditions are drafted that way specifically because we could not allow certain uses because it would have then allowed increased trip generation. So we actually had discussions with them. If you wanted to allow certain uses, then we would go into the full TIA. So there was discussions on what particular uses could and could not happen within the retail component as well because it would generate much higher uses and volumes. I think one of the ones that we discussed was a coffee shop, for example. Um, and so some of those uses had to be scaled back based off trip generation as well. Um, so those were discussions and part of the analysis in our review when HDR was reviewing it for the town as well.
Okay, thank you. And I have another, uh, question for, um, Banks. Um, and this may, I don't know, you may need to direct this quarterback this to whoever, but Collinsworth Drive, I mean, I used to be a member of Riverwood Athletic. I, I don't live in Riverwood, so it's definitely a beautiful commune. I, if I didn't live downtown, that's one I definitely would consider. Collinsworth Drive is a narrow road. I just, as a, driving there when I was going to the gym, I always remembered going to the pool and stuff like that. So you're, you're, you're creating this parallel parking, but are you doing any additional expansion of Collinsworth or can you kind of elaborate on that, um, a little bit further, please?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so you are correct. Currently as it stands, Collinsworth, Waterfield, Swan, those are narrow roads. We are going to be increasing the right-of-way from 50 feet to 60 feet and we're gonna be using our property line to do that. And that's in order to ensure that, um, we can fit the, the road section, so the 11-foot drivelanes, the parallel parking, the sidewalks, um, the landscaping buffers, all that stuff. So there won't be, um, with these improvements and with this expansion, we will, um, take out that, uh, congestion liability, if that makes sense.
Okay, so 50 to 60.
Correct.
So how much of that, how much additional, other than the parallel parking, would that be then? Um, okay, I see you have a drawing here, but.
And sorry, do you mind repeating that? I was.
I mean, obviously you're, the road's gonna have to be expanded to a certain degree because you're adding parallel parking, but you know, outside of that additional width because of the parallel parking, you know, how much wider is the, the road, less the parallel parking gonna be? Does that make sense?
I think so. So, um, with that expansion, you are correct, it'll accommodate that eight-foot parallel parking, but it will also accommodate both a north and south, um, 11-foot driveline, which is standard within CDOT requirements.
Okay, so that's a standard. Do you know what it is right now roughly?
Well, I don't know.
Okay, so it's gonna be about two foot wider then? Is that fair to say? Okay, okay. Um, the other thing I had, you know, so, and I'm familiar with 55-plus center and I can go on that in a minute, but is there, is there a reason why it's 55-plus not versus 65-plus? Is that some sort of state or federal?
Yeah, so we have to be in accordance with fair housing as well as state requirements.
So that's legally, you can't make it 65?
Yes, we have to be in line with the state requirements for the financing.
Okay, okay. Um, I could ask a lot more questions, but I think I'll get a lot of dirty looks because we'll be here all night. Um, thank you for that. I appreciate, uh, I guess I do have a, a question for the town attorney. Um, Mr. Colley, regarding the, um, I guess this development and any other development, the, the, um, the pedestrian walkways, everything else, is there any liability from the HOA with respect to anything that is going to happen within this particular corridor? Or, or HOAs, let me rephrase the question. HOAs typically li, could they be liable for these, you know, pedestrian challenges, issues, crosswalks, accidents, everything else? Or is it, is that typically outside of the purview?
See that. I don't foresee that. These, these are public streets. They're not owned by the HOA. I don't, I don't think they do.
Okay, okay, all right. Um, I don't have any more questions at this time. If I do, I'll, I'll bug everybody. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Archer.
Thank you. Um, oh, Banks, sorry. Well, I believe you might need to get up for this one. Um, regarding the, the point that a couple people have made, well, I'm over 55 years old and I take a lot of trips per day. In fact, I think even my neighbor here made that point. Um, am I thinking of this wrong? I'm trying to think out loud. Um, these folks would be on a certain low level of income to be living here. So I'm just doing the math in my head and I'm thinking it would probably be pretty unusual that they would have like your typical nine to five, just because that would be generating then income that would make them have too much money to live there. Are most of these people, I mean, are, you see what I'm getting at? They're not gonna have like your typical 40-hour-a-week job because then they're not gonna qualify to live there.
Um, that's a great question. So, you know, with seniors specifically, um, like I was mentioned earlier, is that a lot of them are on a fixed income. So for those that are retired, you know, we can count their, you know, selling a home, um, their retirement savings, all of that can go towards their income qualifications. But, you know, one thing we do with Dominion is let's say there is a senior that's still working and let's say they qualify to live at our property today. You know, if they get a promotion at work, you know, we don't want to penalize them for that because, you know, that wouldn't, that would defeat the purpose of the program. So we wouldn't kick them out of the property. They could continue to live there. That clears it up for me. Thank you.
Mr. Sims.
So I got more of a comment than anything than a question. So, um, I just want to state and let everyone know where I'm sitting at right now because this is difficult, um, decisions. I could go back and forth here. One of the things I do know is that where Clayton is headed from a, um, age perspective, this is something that is needed. Um, I think that the way it's being done is, uh, uh, good. I think they put a lot of time and effort. I like any time that, I love that when the builder comes to the planning department and, uh, also listens to some of the citizens and, uh, I love the comment where it was said that, hey, that you guys, you know, looked to work with a couple of certain things that the residence was asking for. So you're hitting all the right things. The things that I'm struggling with is, uh, two things. One of them is, which is of course, um, traffic, not from the perspective that, uh, it's going to be so much. It's just that I have to look at it from an overall perspective. What I mean by that is I also know what we have going on in Clayton with all the other decisions that have been made with the incoming, uh, traffic. Also just from the aesthetics. So what I mean by that is I don't know if I'm real favorable to that being there. Um, those are two of the main things that I'm, I'm, I'm struggling with. Do want to make a comment and I wish the young lady, she left, that I appreciate what she said because, uh, we don't come in here, believe it or not, and this is, uh, my fourth year and I'm ending up on here. I've never came in here and made a decision right off the bat on anything. I make my decision after I hear all of council and after I hear the citizens out there. So, um, I appreciate her and what she said because she listened to the questions and the things that we were saying and was very observant. And, uh, I would say that she already kinda knew that we kinda asked the why questions. So just a comment.
I just have a question about the, the trips. So 688 total daily trips based off the, yeah, I'll wait for you to get to the mic. And then the 852 trips that would be theoretically generated if it was a commercial property. So that generation study was done in 2008.
Yes, ma'am.
So what would you anticipate? Maybe you can't answer that if the study hasn't been done. If, if the 688 is current and the 1,852 was, that number came up in 2008, if that property was retail, is there any kind of theoretical number that you would increase that 852 by in today's terms so we can sort of level what that looks like?
I realize traffic engineers get accused of guessing a lot, so to avoid that, I'm gonna avoid guessing here. What I'll say is the benefit that y'all see in mixed-use development is that those are complementary uses where folks aren't having to make individual trips each time. So having a retail component paired with a residential component, um, in an area with both residential and the retail that's already within Riverwood provides a balance as opposed to retail traffic acting like most retail traffic does and having a morning peak, could have a lunch peak if it was a, a restaurant-type use and then an afternoon peak. Um, so I don't want to guess any more than I'm already accused of guessing as a traffic engineer, but I'll say that, um, retail is generally the higher generating use.
Would you logically say that that number would be higher?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Casey.
Sorry, Banks. Uh, Devine, coming up real quick again. Can you show, I just trying to wrap my head around this income level. Do you, could you get on the slide where the, is it the minimum or maximum? Like I said, I was trying to. Like I said, I was trying to, I'm trying to correlate it to my, my experience with...
This slide?
Yes, ma'am, yeah, I guess, okay. So those are income limits, so those are maximum. They can't make any more over that?
Correct.
Okay, okay. That's, that's all I have right now. I'm gonna give you some of my thoughts, if you want.
I'm hoping.
Okay. You know, and we don't come in here, you know, obviously, you have preconceived thoughts when you come to these meetings, you, you know, you, you hear the community reach out, you have people that are in favor or against, you're getting the email, we got the email while we're sitting up here, somebody saying that he's actually was against it, now he's in favor of the project, so check your email. We got one literally while we were on, on the dais. But, you know, for me, I'm torn. I mean, I, I mean, I grew up here, so, you know, anything new's shocking, and it's, it's overwhelming. It doesn't discount, you know, people that haven't lived here their whole lives, but it is, anything new i, is shocking and overwhelming, especially when it keeps coming and it doesn't seem to stop. And I've said this for the other, you know, the other project, the other, the other week, we're, we're blessed and we're cursed at the same extent. You know, we live near Raleigh, we live near the airport, we near live, live near great schools, so we're blessed that we have those so nearby, but because we have them so nearby, everybody wants to freaking move to the area, right? So we're gonna, you know, unfortunately, continue to get growth, and when 540 gets fully built out in this area, who the hell knows what it's gonna look like then? I may decide to finally move, I have no idea. But, you know, I feel like in this situation, you know, we're having to kind of choose the lesser, in no offense, but we're having to kind of choose the lesser of two evils. We have a developer, you know, respectfully, it's, you know, he's invested in this, and he spent his money, and he is adamant that he's gonna do something with it. So, you know, at this point in time, we have to make decisions that, you know, we have to decide between the lesser of these two. And I say evil is not, I don't mean that, you know, in, in a negative way, even though it sounds negative. You know, for me, you know, speaking from personal experience, and this is where my bias comes in, my mom lived in a center like this for, for over two years, two and a half years, and she was on a, a two-year waiting list just to get into a place like this, and her income level was way, way less than that. But the center's Bowman Manor, it's at the 4042 area, you can Google it, drive by it, it doesn't have all the amenities that this center has, but it was pretty darn nice, and it was, it was, it was affordable housing. You know, my mom, single, single lady, I'm the only child, so there was a lot of burden with me trying to make sure my mom is in a safe place. She couldn't live in a, in an apartment or a single-family house or something like, she couldn't, she couldn't cut grass, right? There's just a lot of challenges. So, you know, she lived in there, there was honestly a lot of, lot of retired retirees living on social security, there's a lot of ladies that played cards all day long in the little courtyard area or the little vestibule area at the place, and, you know, they were very cautious of the people that walked in. When I walked in with my 11-year-old daughter and my wife, they're kind of like, who are you? Why are you here? You know, eventually, they drew the, the fond of us and, and very, very, very happy, very, very polite people, and they, I mean, they're just living, they're trying to live their best life, you know, as, as they age, age out. For me, you know, I was driving, you know, 15 to 20 minutes one way from downtown Clayton to this 4042 area to visit my mom, and she doesn't, she forgets, loses the TV remote, or she can't navigate the TV remote. So, I mean, for me, it's, it's a little personal, because having, you know, there's not a lot of options like this there. My mom was in a, on a two-year waiting list. You know, for me, if I lived in the Riverwood community and I had elderly parents, I'd damn well be the first one there to fill out an application for this project, you know, versus, you know, something else that could go there. So, you know, for me, you know, that's personal experience, my mom doesn't live there anymore, she's, we had to move her to a, unfortunately, move her to a memory care center a couple, a week and a half ago, but, you know, one of her really good friends, he was a war veteran, a Vietnam veteran, his name was Dave, you know, sweetest guy ever, you know, he was 82, my mom was only 70. You know, he adopted one of the dogs that, you know, other lady unfortunately passed away, that was a couple rooms down. So, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a quiet, you know, a lot of the people that, you know, my experience with this one, I can't say they're all the same, a lot of people there didn't even drive. My mom definitely could not drive. Dave did drive, and then Dave didn't drive the last year that, that, over the last, last year. And so it's, it's just a, it's a, it's a community within a community, they're very, there, there's no crime, they're very cautious, they're actually, you know, there's a lot of good value that they could bring to the area, in my opinion, and, you know, and that's where, you know, for me, as I'm making a decision as a council person, I have to choose between, you know, I hate to say it again, but the lesser of two evils. I mean, yeah, I love it, the B-trees and everything else, and unfortunately, that's not what it's gonna be. You know, it could be something a whole heck of a lot more scary. And so, you know, if, yeah, I'd like to hear what everybody else's comments are, but, you know, please keep that in mind, I mean, there might be a potential opportunity there. You know, I do feel bad, and I hope there's a lot more to be done with the neighbors that are adjacent. You know, I think, I appreciate the, the transportation and pedestrian improvements. I will say also, too, I was very impressed, when the meeting was tabled at the last council meeting, you were here and you were handing out flyers, you know, you were going up to everybody and anybody, and there was another contentious meeting that night, and you were, you were giving people flyers, and you're trying to find out if they were here for, for, for the Dominion project or for that other project. But, so, I mean, I haven't seen that before, and I've only been on council for a little over three and a half years, and I do applaud, applaud you for that, that, that effort. So I'll just shut up now, and I'll hear what everybody else has to say. Thank you.
Anyone else?
These are more of deliberation comments, so I don't want to tie you up standing there unless someone else had something to ask Banks, or are we in deliberation yet? Sorry, guess I should have checked.
No, you're, you can be seated, and you can...
Oh, yeah, sorry, I didn't mean to...
No, you're fine, I'm getting my, my step goals...
I didn't mean to lecture you on why you're standing up there.
No, that was, that was great. Councilmember Casey, thank you for those words, and having seen what you and your family have, have been through in the past few months, I have a lot of empathy for that, so appreciate hearing all that. And I, I just wanted to start by saying that, you know, I was on the planning board for four years, then on council my fourth year. Rezoning hearings are the hardest, they are absolutely the hardest. Nothing hits harder than feeling like your home or the area around your home is under threat or out of your control. It's just a terrible helpless feeling, and it's good and appropriate for people to come and speak about how they feel about it, even if you have to do it in a negative or defensive way, because it's better to get it out and have it said in the public sphere, and, and we all need to hear it, and, and your neighbors need to hear it. So I, I'm glad to see people coming in and speaking about this. And normally, at this point, I have a long list of pros and cons. I, I think through the deliberation this evening, you've kind of heard the pros and the cons, and you've heard the way this application has changed and evolved as this conversation has evolved tonight, especially for the neighbors who have been at the planning board meeting, and then the neighborhood meetings, and now tonight, you've seen how these things have, have changed. I had a lot of other things I was gonna say tonight, because I had, I, I did arrange several meetings with various stakeholders in town to do even a little bit further deep dive on this, for example, meeting with the owners of the senior living community on the other side of Pritchard, to get some of their experiences and that sort of thing. So I think you've heard tonight the traffic and safety concerns. My hope is that the coordination that has begun between the schools, the town, and the developer continue. There is, even as we, we learned tonight, the other development going in on the corner is also involved in, in making some changes proactively in, and as this has all developed. I heard about people talking about buffers, and to, to echo Councilman Casey's remarks, I would love to see this remain trees, absolutely. I mean, I think we all would, we all have a natural craving for open spaces. And I did want to reassure folks that we do have a 2024 Parks and Rec master plan, and several of the goals in there pertain to open space, so it is something that the town is actively planning for. I would really encourage you to go into that plan if you can, I know it's tedious and boring, but there are goals in there that are in the five-to-10-to-20-year range that the town really is trying to chip away at, and that is acquiring property and planning for tree plantings and, and things like that. So I wanted to speak to that. As for stormwater, I also have concerns about that, I've had concerns about that the entire time I've been on this council. We did rework our stormwater ordinances, and we're getting ready to rework them again. So just the simple example, as I understand it, when you're driving around and you're in the rain and you're not driving through a big flooded-out road, that's because the stormwater system is working. When you're somewhere in a neighborhood or on a road and you're driving through huge unsafe puddles, that's where the stormwater systems aren't working, and so it is an ongoing challenge, that is an absolutely valid concern. The best we can hope for is through this process, that, that as they come in for their site plan reviews and things, that all those details get caught, and that in the end, if there is continued flooding caused from this development, it will be held accountable. Since we have been up here, Clayton has taken on responsibility for the stormwater program away from the county, and it has gotten much better. Are we still seeing lingering concerns? Absolutely, and that's something that would need to be monitored. I think you all heard about the other types of development that could go here. I think that of the options, again, this is one of the best. One of my personal goals from, from getting on this council was, when I was getting elected, people were complaining that Clayton was turning into a town of cookie-cutter homes. And so every application that has come across this dais since we've been up here, we have negotiated to the absolute maximum to get variety, anywhere from larger lots, larger lots, medium lots, things that have variability and some character, all the way to something like this that I consider at the other end of the spectrum, which is dense and affordable for a certain targeted age group. So, again, those are my comments, and, and based on that, I do feel like this application meets the rules, requirements, and, and I could go either way on this, but I think you could make an argument that it is a good thing and possibly the best thing that could go here.
Anyone else?
I just want to chime in, because, you know, the mayor doesn't get a vote unless it's a tie. I just want to express my appreciation to anybody who created awareness about how important school safety is. And when I became the mayor of Clayton, and in this very room walked in a bunch of third and fourth and fifth grade students from Rearwood Elementary that came to meet the mayor, that were chaperoned by a lot of adults, and they got to learn how the town works, it was, it was a tremendous bonding experience, and that really is what, one of the, one of the greatest pleasures of being the mayor is. But school safety is number one, and, and safety in general with the town of Clayton, you know, we have made public safety a priority in the budget for as long as I've been here, and school safety is hugely important, and nothing can be done to address it more until awareness is created. And it isn't just that awareness gets to be created one time and it's done, like continuous to, it's good, it could be better. School safety is good, it could be better. And I am really happy that the town of Clayton with Dolores, who comes to us from Johnson County Public Schools, our communication with our new superintendent, like our general assembly members can help us with D O T, like we finally got the right team together at the table to really be able to make a difference out at Riverwood when it comes particularly to traffic and kids and safety. And at the end of the day, that's all Jody McLeod is really concerned about, those kids deserve to be in a safe environment. Parents get to be, you know, have a place to drop kids off safely and pick kids up safely. You know, I'm not necessarily sure that staff needs to be standing in the middle of a town of Clayton street directing traffic, trying to help kids get across the street, one side or the other. Like, there is ways to make this better, and we finally have all the people at the right table to make this better, but it would not have ever happened if some people didn't start talking about what about the safety for our schools? So that's all I got. Thank you.
If there are no further comments, Mr. Mayor, I am prepared to make a motion.
Ms. Archer?
I would like to make a motion to approve 2025-10-CZM Clayton Mixed Use Conditional Rezoning, and this would be inconsistent with the 2045 Comprehensive Growth Plan. That is ordinance 2025-08-03. While this request is generally consistent with the 2045 Comprehensive Growth Plan in goal LU3, which encourages a range of housing types and lot sizes that will meet the needs of various income levels, families, sizes, and ages, this, this request is specifically inconsistent in that the proposed residential density of this project exceeds the recommended density in the 2045 Comprehensive Growth Plan. The action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the area is currently zoned for corridor commercial uses. The rezoning reduces the amount of overall commercial in favor of a mix of commercial and residential. The project is providing an affordable housing option to a growing senior population that is currently unmet in Clayton. That's the end of my motion.
Second?
Wait. Mayor, technical correction?
Yes.
The ordinance reference is 2025-09-02.
And is that what your comment was, town clerk?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Then I will revise that to 2025-09-02.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign.
Aye.
Motion carries four to one. Thank you. Thank you all again for joining us this evening, for being a part of this lengthy but valuable discussion. Thank you. We're gonna have to call for like a 15-minute break. Thank you.
Thank you.[416.43]
I'd like to call our meeting back to order. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing, 2025-53-RZ Clayton North PSC Conventional Res zoning.
Good evening, Council. Robert Tate, Senior Planner with the Planning Department. Look at my presentation. Give me one second. Sorry about that. So tonight I have two items for you. The first is a conventional rezoning. This is 2025-53-RZ for the Clayton North Public Safety Complex. This is a conventional request, like I mentioned, to go from PDR, the Residential Plan Development, to public facilities. This site is located at 119 Club Connection Boulevard, located on the westernly side of Covered Bridge Road at the intersection with Club Connection Boulevard just across from Loop Road. This property is approximately eight acres in size and currently is vacant. Here's an aerial image of the site. This also shows where the posted notice was placed on the site for this meeting. So looking here, we have two maps. The top map is the current zoning map, so that PDR zoning designation that's associated with the surrounding Walton Farms neighborhood. And on the bottom is the proposed zoning from the PDR to public facilities, so shown in that gray color. And just really quickly while we're looking at this map, I wanted to highlight that this site was purchased by the town relatively recently from the Walton Farms community. So looking at the consistency and compatibility with the 2045 growth plan, this request is inconsistent with the low density residential designation as the designation does not foresee non-residential uses in the designation. So if approved tonight, this would automatically amend the future land use map. So it would go from low density residential to low density residential with the neighborhood center overlay. So staff is recommending approval of this conventional rezoning. And quickly to mention, conventional rezonings is just a change to the map to go from one district to another. So this is not with zoning conditions or a constant plan like you're typically seeing, just the change of the actual zoning district itself. This item appeared at the planning board meeting on July 28th and was also recommended for approval by the planning board. So just taking a look at your options, the second option is recommended by staff, which was also recommended by the planning board. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions you may have.
All right. Any questions for staff? Thank you, sir. This has been noted as a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak, please step forward and state your name for the record. No one wishing to speak. I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to council for deliberation.
Mr. Mayor, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Ms. Archer.
I make a motion to approve the Clayton North PSC Conventional Rezoning Ordinance While the proposed rezoning is generally consistent with the adopted 2045 Comprehensive Growth Plan in that Goal SI-1 invests in utility infrastructure that supports land use patterns envisioned by the future land use map, it is inconsistent in that the property is designated as low-density residential in the future land use map and residential is not a permitted use of the proposed district. This action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the Comprehensive Growth Plan strives to ensure the capacity of emergency services as the population grows and the rezoning would permit uses that allow for expansion of these services.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for adoption of ordinance 2025-09-04 and the contingency and reasonableness statement. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. The final public hearing is 2025-52-RZ Clayton Southwest PSC Conventional Rezoning.
Good evening again, Robert Tate, Senior Planner with the Planning Department. So this is 2025-52-RZ, another conventional rezoning for a site located at 1609 Veterans Parkway. This is a request going from OFI, Office Institutional, to public facilities. This property is approximately eight acres in size, just like the previous, and is currently Here's another aerial image just showing where the public notice was posted on the We have the two zoning maps. The top showing the current zoning of OFI and the bottom showing the proposed zoning going to public facilities. So unlike the previous request, this request is consistent with the future land use map. This would facilitate, like mentioned, the public safety center in the southwest portion of this, of the town. Staff is recommending approval, and this was also recommended approval by the planning board at their July 28th meeting. Here is a list of the following motions and we're recommending approval, so that first motion. And that is all I have for you. Please let me know if you have any questions about this one.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? This has been noted as a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this, please step forward and state your name for the record.
Drew Harbison, and we live directly across from the proposed site. I just have a few questions. One is, you talk about a public safety center. I assume that's EMS, fire, and police?
Fire and police only.
Fire and police only. Okay. And will this, will construction of this facility start before or after the widening of Veterans Highway, which is scheduled for 2030?
It will start before.
Will it be completed before?
I believe, and it will be completed before 2030.
Yes. The intent, the intent would be for it to be completed prior to the widening of Veterans Parkway.
Okay. And then my last comment or question as well, has the planning board worked with Department of Transportation, whose plan at Pinecroft is to have a roundabout? Has that been considered in the design of this facility?
Yeah, I can answer that. So we have worked closely with DOT on the entire corridor. They are very aware that this property was being selected for us for a public safety center and have committed to working for a either mountable curb or median break for response to be able to head back west coming out of this property. The roundabout that you mentioned is still part of their plan as well as U-turn just to the west of where this property is as well. But we have worked with them to secure a commitment to get that median break as well.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anyone else? No one else wishing to speak? I'll turn it over to council. I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to council for deliberation. In this case.
I just want to make a comment because I feel like, you know, it should be said, even though it's pretty obvious. You know, obviously, the last rezoning in this one, you know, these are public safety complexes that are fire and police and, you know, as fortunately or unfortunately, as this community continues to grow, this is the town's commitment to providing safe services for the citizens. And so, you know, these two centers, these two locations are going to be, you know, future centers to serve the community from a fire and police. And I think, you know, it's just, that's one of the big things that people have a lot of concerns about. We get a lot of feedback from surveys and everything else, and public safety is always at least, at least number one or number two every single time. So just wanted to put that on the record because I just think it just needs to be said. Thank you. That's all.
I agree. And I would also add to Councilman Casey's comments that, you know, response time is directly related to how much insurance a homeowner pays. And when we reduce the response time, that reduces the homeowner insurance. So this is a plus in that regard as well. Anyone else? All right. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion. This motion would be to recommend approval. I make a motion to approve the Clayton Southwest PSC Conventional Rezoning Ordinance 2025-09-05 based on consistency with the future land use map, Goals, Policies, and/or Strategies in the adopted 2045 Comprehensive Growth Plan in that Goal LU-1 preserves Clayton's character while allowing for growth and development in appropriate areas. Policy LU-1.3 encourages non-residential land and uses, and land uses in areas consistent with the future land use map. Goal SI-1 invests in utility infrastructure that supports land use patterns envisioned by the future land use map. It is inconsistent in that the property is designated as medium density residential and neighborhood center on the future land use map. This action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the Comprehensive Growth Plan strives to ensure the capacity of emergency services as the population grows.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the adoption of ordinance 2025-09-05 and the consistency and reasonableness statement. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Now we will jump down to staff reports, beginning with the town manager.
In the interest of time, I'll keep them brief. One, thank you very much for those two approvals. As you guys mentioned, those two public safety centers are a real game changer for us from a response perspective, particularly the north side one, the one on the north side of town. Being able to get to our folks, our residents in Riverwood and that surrounding area, that station will be a big win for us. As I mentioned earlier today, that one's a little bit behind the one to the south in terms of permitting and all that because we do have an environmental feature we're dealing with. But that is slated to be done in the next five years as part of our CIP program. And then the one that you just voted for on Veterans Parkway, we were very fortunate that site, again, based on the study that Chief Rains worked with our consultant to do in terms of locating those, that was a really key pickup for us at the end of last year there with the church being willing to work with us on purchasing that property. So kudos to you all for putting us on that path. Last thing I want to mention is, I believe I mentioned it to you all last week, but I just did want to announce the retirement of Scott Barnard, our longstanding Parks and Rec Director. He was here just about, just a little under eight years. In the interest of the time, we'll invite Scott back another night so that we can go ahead and recognize him and all that. But just wanted to say thank you and congratulations to him for all his service. Thanks.
Absolutely. Thank you. Town clerk?
No report.
Any other staff? I'll now open the floor for informal discussion and public comment. Anyone wish to speak, please step forward and state your name.
Yes, no staff.
Oh, better get to the front row.
Green light means go. Okay. I'll try to be even quicker than Rich was because we've all been here for a pretty good while this evening. Two items that have come up for, for us here recently. Number one, traffic issues, basically delays at some signals on DOT routes at Ranch Road Extension down in that area. I can tell you, I've talked with DOT, they're monitoring the situation. There's a lot of engineering, a lot of modeling that goes in to these signal designs, but at the end of the day, it takes a little trial and error once they're implemented. So they're monitoring that situation, making efforts to make improvements to, I guess you'd say tweak, the timing on, on that signal. We've also noticed, especially since schools started back, Veterans Boulevard, Guy Road Intersection, as well as Barber Mill Road Intersection, reached out to DOT about that. They've told me they're working through some software issues as well as they have a work order in place to make some improvements or some changes to the inductive loop on Barber Mill Road, which is that sensor in the roadway that tells a signal when it's time to change. They're working through those things. They're telling me about four to six weeks to, to work through both of those issues to help see some improvement in that area. Also, switching gears, bridges on our freeway trails, we have, we have 19 bridge structures on our trails. Five of them are steel structures, either with treks decking or timber decking. The remainder of them are all timber construction bridges. And we've here recently, excuse me, here originally been made aware of some issues with rotting boards, with deteriorating conditions on some of the decks and rails. So we're moving very quickly to acquire the materials and make some emergency repairs on those structures. It will require some bridge closings to, to do these things, specifically March Creek Bridge on the River Trail as well as the Newshill River Crossing. We're anticipating closure of March Creek for probably a two-week span, for the River Crossing Bridge for about a three-week span to get in there and get some of the deteriorated decking and rails off and get them replaced, anticipating as soon as we can get materials in, most likely around, probably September 15th is when we should experience the first closing. But as we get closer, get our materials in place, we'll be working with the Communications Department to get some clear, just information out to the public in regards to those closings. But we're handling that, those issues. We've patched some things up in the field, but we're making more substantial maintenance repairs here in the near future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate that. Thank you for the update. All right. I'll now open the floor for informal discussion and public comment. Anyone wish to speak, please step forward and state your name for the record. That's all right.
My name's Edward Gormley. I live in the Dell Webb, the Carolina Overlook Retirement Community. I'm here to talk about golf carts. Back in June, I sent an email to everyone in the council and the city manager, and I did receive a response from the mayor and two members of the council, which I very much appreciate. I should tell you what generated that and some other facts about this. My original reason for sending the email was because I had originally went to the police station to inquire about requirements for registration of a golf cart. The officer behind the desk told me there is no exceptions. All golf carts must be registered. Oh. Well, the state of North Carolina sort of contradicts that in their laws. And then I asked a question. This little developer has three golf carts that they use for sales. They're not registered. And the response I got was, I can't address that. Then I sent the email. Recently, and I'm going to give you some other facts now. So recently I went on a vacation. I went to Myrtle Beach. Down in Myrtle Beach, it's a tourist town, lots of traffic, lots of cars. If I saw one golf cart, I saw a thousand. And they're all over the place. None of them are registered. I went this, and another little history thing, I don't know if you know it, there's still a Piggly Wiggly in Myrtle Beach. I went to the Piggly Wiggly, and there's a half a dozen golf carts in there. Talked to the people, and they're buying groceries, putting it in their golf cart and scattering. I mean, the main street in Myrtle Beach is 45 miles an hour, and they're crossing it. They're not driving on it, but they're crossing it, and they're all over Myrtle Beach. Another thing to think about, you've all heard of the Villages in Florida. If you Google the Villages and you inquire about how many golf carts they have, Google will tell you they have in excess of 85,000 golf carts. Zero registration requirements. So, so I get mixed messages from the police station about golf cart requirements. The state of North Carolina states that you can't drive, you cannot drive a golf cart on any highway 35 miles an hour or higher. The Carolina Overlook is surrounded by three roads. City Road, where a speed limit, and Carolina Overlook is 45 miles an hour. Covered Bridge Road, where a portion of it has a sign 55 miles an hour, and another sign says, further down the road says 45 miles an hour. O'Neill Street, O'Neill was just, had the speed limit lowered from 55 to 45 by Carolina Overlook. Now, if the city requires a resident to register a golf cart, if a resident of Carolina Overlook, if the city requires them to register a golf cart, that means in addition to paying estate fees, you have to have it inspected every year. Costs $13.60 to get an inspection. That's not the end of it. It costs you around $250 to transport it from Carolina Overlook to a gas station or a registration statement to get it, to get it to pass so you can apply for a registration. Doesn't make any sense whatsoever, in my opinion. The reason I'm here is Carolina Overlook is a condensed retirement community. It's going to have 1,300 homes when it's all said and done. People can't go outside the community with a golf cart legally. And very honestly, if they did, they'd need their head examined. I would recommend the city, and the city council, from what I understand state law, has the authority to issue regulations concerning golf carts. I would recommend the city council consider instituting something, or a ready regulation or something exempting residents of Carolina Overlook from having to register a golf cart to travel inside their community. It just doesn't make physical sense for retirement people to have to go through all that aggravation for a $13.60 registration fee and pay $250 to transport it. Yep, the reason I know the $250, I just got a quote on it yesterday, or yesterday, today, this morning. So just something for you to consider, and I would ask you to consider that for residents of Carolina Overlook. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Council comments? I'm hearing none. I did skip you, I'm sorry. Town attorney? It's been a long night, sir. I'm sorry.
I understand, and I, I do need to give you a short report. The report is about claims handling practices. Couple of things. Per the town charter and the town code, my duties are to advise town officials and defend suits against the town. You all know that. And we have claims from time to time, they're not unusual. We even have exaggerated claims, believe it or not, from time to time. That's not unusual. And the claims process is that they're reviewed by our office and we advise the mayor and council, and then you make the decisions on how to handle and proceed with those claims. So while the claims are not unusual, it is a bit unusual in my experience for a claimant to demand that their claim be put on a council agenda. When claims are reviewed and presented to you for recommendation, sometimes they're after they're settled, sometimes they are denied, and sometimes they're litigated. If a claim is settled, it's reported back in open session at a council meeting. That's statutory. It's not our practice to try cases in the media and in particular, social media. Now specifically, why am I reporting on this to you tonight, you might ask? Last Friday, the town received a claim, or a letter by Amanda Underwood requesting that, or demanding that her claim for allegations of copyright infringement be presented on a town agenda. And again, that's not how we handle claims against the town. And she cites a code section that she contends requires the manager to put that item on the agenda. Now my intent here is not to get into the merits or the lack of merits of her claim, but to simply address the notion that whether the manager is obligated to put her claim on an agenda. And I've advised the manager that he is not so obligated. Doing so would be contrary to the best practices that you operate under in managing and handling claims. Now, as you know, you've been briefed on Ms. Underwood's claims. The town has offered to pay over $3,000 towards her claims. At last report, her demand was $91,700. And there have been repeated threats to file a lawsuit. Those deadlines have come and gone, and one may have been filed. I don't know. We haven't been served. I can report that. So again, it's not my intent to get into the merits of the claim or the lack thereof, but just to let you know that that claim has been reviewed and responded to and will be handled in accordance with the town's claim handling process, best practices, and my duties under the charter and the town code.
All right. Thank you, sir. Questions or comments for the attorney? All right. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss a legal matter and to discuss the purchase of real property.
Motion to go into closed session.
We have a motion and a second to go into closed session. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Please clear the room.